On your best behavior.
I really appreciated all of this information on the recreation grant.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot and to give us the whole breakdown of the points of what we would have to do to qualify. I thought that was very helpful.
Just I don't know if you if you looked on the last years, but there was a certain number of points, I think 20 that you got. If you had not received one. Well, we haven't. I think we haven't received one in my two years, but they seem to have changed. Hopefully, we'd still be pretty high up on the list.
It looks, I mean, going through that checklist, I think it looks like we would have out of the 250 points. It looks like we would have quite a few. Um, I, I think our online survey of people would count for the online. That was like one of the when we asked citizens, what do you want? We did that, what, a year and a half ago, two years ago?
That would also be part of the five-year rec plan update.
Yeah, so that seemed like it was. It looked very promising because while we have other infrastructure issues that we don't necessarily want to spend a lot of general fund dollars on a splash pad. If we could get a rec grant for it.
Pickleball courts and patronicity. We'll get, we'll get to there.
So we have one more minute. Both for those of you who might not have heard, both Mayor Hall and Counselor Nixon are not going to be here this evening. So we will be looking for motions to excuse them. All right, I will call the August 12th, 2021 meeting of the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order at 7:00 PM. All rise and please say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will call the rule, Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mayor Proton Conley is here, Mr. Grove.
Here.
Ms. Nixon. Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Race.
Here.
Mayor Hall. I will entertain a motion to excuse Counselor Nixon and to excuse Mayor Hall.
I'll make that motion. Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries to excuse Counselor Nixon and Mayor Hall. At this time, we move into public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Any citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you would like a response, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Donna Clark. You don't have to answer me, though. I just am coming with such happy news from the summer reading program, the concerts, a beautiful new fire station. I have to just wear zippers because if I wear buttons, they'll pop every time I go by. It's just beautiful and amazing, and we had such a great time when we were having the ribbon cutting. I loved it. And it's, it's just, we're moving up and our community is growing. It's beautiful. I look out the windows of the new library that's four years old now, by the way. Every day, just looking at the, the, the beauty, the, the grounds, the amphitheater. It's just, I love it. Anyway, I came to just wow you straight over with the statistics from the summer reading program and how well we're doing. Of course, the city and the library partnered. It was an original first year of inspiration of our city manager having sidewalk chalk, which actually, under my breath, I was going like, really? Do we really want to mark all over this new, new, you know, sidewalk? But this year it just blew straight up. We had 93 people come, I mean, on a Saturday. And it was just great. I, I couldn't be there. I was in Oklahoma, but 93, that's a lot of people. And then, of course, with the concerts, I know when our city manager first came, he wanted to, he talked about cake locks. And I thought, that's a great idea, you know, we'll have a cake lock. We never have until this year. We had a cake lock and Michael and Renee were there and we had all this beautiful, these beautiful desserts from Mom's Busy Bakery and compliments of a couple of our city council people who helped to spring that whole thing forward. And I, I noticed how happy the, the, the two people from the bakery were. They were able to sell a few things too. And people were just, I loved the food myself, the, the sweets, and it was a success. And we'd, again, the city and the library worked together and, and just benefiting everyone. And um, we had, we're arranging school visits now. We hope that that'll be able to take place. Every month, CTA would bring kindergarten through eighth grade to the library to check out books, to make sure they had a library card. So we're, that's in the process. We're excited about that. We had our story time the first time in person. We had 49 kids and 24 adults in the summer. We had outside, we had the princesses and Spider-Man. We had 150. The, our phone party, we had 120. So overall, we had 1,125 people sign up for the summer reading. We had missions that were completed. We had 1,333. Actually, in this online database where you can go in and enter how much you've read and, and take your points and then go on and see what prizes are and, and put your, your figures into the prizes you want to win. And we had, there were games in there. We had 1,367 games that were played. And the total tickets that people read to turn in and, and earn and get what their name in for the reading raffle. We had 11,039. Now, this is what blew me away. Now, there are points, there are cumulative reading points. We had 1,384,785 points. That, that is just incredible. And for online, we had 43 prizes. Now Vanderheide gave five oil changes. So you, you figure how much from the different businesses giving two or three things or $50 or two $25 gift cards or whatever. There were 95 people that won prizes. So that, that's, I don't know anybody that does, and it's because of our, our, our community. Now, that's beyond also the fact that nine businesses from ice cream to hamburgers to all kind. I mean, people are eating all over town, nine different coupons. And we put them in the Ziploc, and when the kids read their missions and get their things done, they get this prize with all these coupons. So there are nine coupons also. So it's, it's exciting and lovely. It's, it's us. You know, it's our community, raising up future family members, families.
Readers.
CEOs. You know, people that are going to employees, you know, so we're, it's, we're invested. We just really invest in this program. It's our signature program, and you know, I love it so much. Though another thing that I think is really fun is that our statistics for July. So the city residents checked out 1,254 items. Soul and Township checked out 1,567 for a total of 5,310 items. Now, another thing that's pretty exciting is that we checked out from KDL 687 items and they checked out from us 2083. Now, years ago, we would have, it would be maybe, we were checking out a little more from them. But now they're checking out more from us, you know, and so I, I think that means that we're healthy and that we have something to offer everyone and our people around us have found us and they love our summer reading program.
You're over your form, isn't it?
And thank you very much. I love Cedar Springs. I love my city partners. We're doing great. The city library together.
We love our city library. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Chief Fraser.
Marty Fraser, 27 West Terry, not fire chief right now.
Okay.
Went to Nelson Township's meeting on Tuesday night. They elected to move it from seven o'clock to five o'clock. I'm wondering if the council and the city manager would be willing to accept a proposed six o'clock start time. I know I've been setting through these for quite a few years and some of them are rather lengthy. Having most of us jobs, you get up early in the morning, you get home late at night. I'm thinking a little bit along city staff too, Rebecca, when Tyler's here, Bill. Now, six o'clock, it's just an hour, but it means an hour earlier getting home. Just something to chew on.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Hearing nothing else, we will move on to the, we don't have any any public hearings. We don't have any public. Adoption of the agenda.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right.
Consent to the review.
We, no, the whole agenda, and then we go to the consent. So we're, we're at five, adoption of the agenda.
Support.
All right, I will do a roll call. So because there's, we'll just do a roll call. So Lisa.
Yes.
Mayor Proton votes yes. Jerry Gross.
Yes.
Molly is absent. Rose Powell.
Yes.
Renee Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Hall is absent, so we have adopted the agenda as presented. Are there any, I should have asked prior, but we're set.
I think I would have told you.
Okay, I was gonna say, jump it. Usually there's something, so it occurred to me that it's unusual that we don't have anything. So at this point, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member and does not require other council members. But this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
All right, I will again do a roll call. Counselor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Powell.
Yes.
Counselor Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Conley votes yes. Moving on to action items. A motion to approve the September 1st, 2021 American Legion Car Show and Community Event Application. Manager Womack, do you have anything you would like to expand upon before someone makes a motion?
Not really. I mean, it's all in the notes that are provided to you. We have allowed the Legion to use the parking spots on the north side of beach because they've had some fairly well-attended shows. Apparently, this will be their last show of the year. They're expecting a large crowd and they're asking that we shut the road down for them. It'll provide a little inconvenience for the couple of people who live on that road. It's just something that the council has to take into consideration.
I found the map to be outlining exactly what and how to be very clear. Does anyone have any questions?
I did speak to Brenna Depp, and she said that they did discuss with the only two people that have driveways over there, and they were fine with that. She was supposed to be here, so I don't know what's going on.
Any other before then, I guess I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 1, 2021 American Legion Car Show Community Event Application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Counselor Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Conley votes yes. Motion carries. Motion to approve onto item B, motion to approve the proposal by, oh, I, we have to, we have to make some decisions. Uh, so there is a recreation grant that we have the opportunity to get. You would have all seen it in your packet. We will need to have an engineering studies. I guess that's what you would call it, Mr. Womack.
Some engineering work, yes.
Yeah, and we have a couple of options in front of us. We, if you look at the outline of the points on the grant that are in your packet, like this is, this is the thing we have to have to be able to apply for that grant. And it's a pretty good-sized grant. There's, I've been over these quite a bit. I have, I've had it on my, I've looked at them online. I haven't actually made it out to any of the places, but um, and I know that Counselor Race has talked about the idea of making it for season.
If you're specifically referring to a splash pad.
Well, a splash pad with a propane fire, natural gas fire type of thing. And so that would be part of what we would be looking at if we go with one of these for a study on an engineering mock-up, I believe. That's my.
So the only modification I'd make to what you're saying is that I don't know if the council has come to any kind of agreement that they want to pursue a splash pad.
Okay.
So a splash pad is how I ask these two firms to bid or propose for the project.
I was gonna say, and that's the stuff that's in our.
Sure, but.
In our packet.
But what I could do is if the council wanted to pursue some other options, such as a natural playground or a revisioning, a re-envisioning of the hardest here springs or whatever. We could simply go back to each of them and say, hey, we want to do something different. Would that cost a different price? The, the bigger issue, I think, is, you know, it's August. These things have to be accomplished by March. I really hope to have had this started earlier in the year. We just, you know, the year kind of flew by. So the question is whether the council feels comfortable enough pursuing something like this with the limited time that we have. Or if we want to say, you know what, we can push this off to April of 23, which point we'd have significantly more time to address some of these issues.
At which point we're out of the running for a grant for.
For 22, correct.
What we can get, we can apply for 23.
Correct. You can apply any year.
Well, and if we don't get it this year, we can apply again in 23, correct?
Yep. If I make, make a comment.
Certainly.
I personally am not satisfied with it solely being for a splash pad. In part, and I have no problem with inviting people into the community to use it. A large percentage of the persons I've heard speaking for have not been residents. And it is the residents who are going to bear the burden of development, maintenance, and continue change over water, however we're going to process it. So I would like to have a chance to talk a little more about projects. I would have no problem whatsoever putting this off until 23, when we have time to discuss more options.
Do you have a alternative thing that you would like to see?
This is part of what I'm saying. We need to discuss options, whatever options come up. Each of us could come up with an option. I have no problem with a playground, but those are seasonal. I understand the possibility year-round for a splash pad, but who's going to bring their kids out in swimsuits playing a splash pad? Just because there's heat there, you know, I mean, just, it's not. I'm just not convinced myself that this is the route we should go for. I do, however, believe that we need to hire somebody to write it up. But I don't think we have really researched and made determinations what the options are.
I'd like to piggyback on what you said as well.
Sure.
Because I know that we were all kind of, I mean, splash pad was thrown out there. I know we've all kind of chatted about this stuff, but we really haven't honed down as to what we really all feel. I mean, we haven't even really talked about it this way. So I agree that I think, you know, I honestly think that pushing it out to 23 is a better option.
And it was mentioned, the pickleball court. It's probably more lengthy and season. But we don't even know if we got a place to put it yet. It makes sense to put it there.
Yeah.
That's a different grant, though, right?
It would be a different funding source.
Yeah, that's a, that's not this grant.
Okay, so, but it was one of the things that was mentioned. So that's, this is where the discussion's got to come in more. Let's come up with a list of possibilities other than the splash pad.
Can I answer the question? Well, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, are you done?
Um, what I'm reading here is that they have, these quotes are to design a grant project and update the city's recreation plan. So basically, what you guys are saying, if I'm correctly reading you correctly, is that we need to devise a plan.
Yeah, right.
Right. So what is, why is there such a big difference in their amounts?
It just happens sometimes.
I mean, there's not any specific thing that one does more than the other?
They're both very high-quality firms. We've worked with both of them on other projects. I just think sometimes, you know, they give different price quotes.
Right. Um, so you don't have a picture of who does this certain.
It was in the packet.
Yeah, I see it, but I mean, you don't have a, not pictures of the splash pad. I mean, an idea of who actually does this type of service better. I mean, we don't have any idea.
I mean, I've sat down with both groups and they've both explained to me the various, you know, projects that they've done. Place and Vanderbrink, they've done a number of local splash pads. I keep needing to take a, a day off from work and drive around and see them. I just haven't had the opportunity.
You can see pictures online.
Yeah.
Like I went and not, not to their website, but to like go look at the Sparta splash pad and to go look at that. And you can, you can find pictures online.
And I'm not necessarily talking about a splash pad. I'm talking more about the designing the recreation plan. You know, and then give, you know, giving us a quote from there.
I haven't seen any of the actual five-year plans that they've done. That's what you're asking?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
This is, this is about the work that they've done.
Right.
And you can find other recreational things they've done.
Now, if I could just address some of the things that have been brought up, though. So, and of course, I appreciate all the things that have been said. But what we'd be asking these groups to do as part of the five-year rec plan is sit down with the residents, sit down with board members, sit down with whoever, and have these discussions of, well, we could do a splash pad, but it's only good for two months a year. And the splash pad is going to cost you X number of dollars per month in water fees. And then you have this maintenance at the end of the year you got to do and.
But we could do a natural playground for this amount of money, and this is how long it will work.
Or the, the, just a regular playground, but you got to have ADA compliance, and now it's going to cost X dot number of dollars, right? These are issues that they can give you a much better idea than I can. I mean, I've given you guys, I think, four possibilities. But, you know, ultimately, they're the ones who are going to have like the numbers and the where could this work at and whatever else. So we could sit down and have a meeting, a sub-courum meeting, and discuss these issues a little bit, you know, in finer detail. But if we want to try to do this by April of 22, we really should start sooner than later. And the more we put it off, you know, we're more likely to go into 23. Although, one thing, because Mr. Gross said something I find just a little funny. The fire pit idea with the splash pad. I don't think that's to encourage kids to be playing in their baby.
No, no.
Yeah.
This was the first I heard tonight. They were going to heat it with a.
No, 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 we're not heating it.
It's a splash pad, and then when the splash pad has been cleaned out and aired out, no more water, then you would bring in a fire pit so that people, because people, I see people down in Rockford doing that. They're hanging out by a fire and having a drink or whatever the case may be. I don't know if this, you know.
Part of the social district.
Yeah.
For more than one thing.
Right.
That's the only thing I could think of that would.
So.
I haven't done.
It would be lit at, for ex, and it would run on natural gas, and it would be lit at, for example, Red Flannel Festival. It would be let it say the Mingle with Kris Kringle. It would be lit, if we were to have like a winter festival, you could have it. That's the idea. It's, it's not, it's not to like try to make it warm enough to use the splash pad.
You're talking about a splash pad, and then you're putting in.
You're like, what? That's what I got out of it, right?
Talking about a way to try to make the entire package, because you would have all this concrete and piping and so on, to have something that could be used recreationally 12 months a year. So it would be adding a component.
Why stand corrected? Because I was thinking, otherwise you might as well put it in a heated pool and let the adults enjoy it too.
You can run through.
So you say that like you can't run through it no splash pad.
Okay, so Ms. Powell, I haven't heard from you.
Um, our policy is not to vote on something until we've had two substantive discussions. I would like to see this table. I'd be more likely to approve, looking at it for next year, not rush into anything. And our Parks and Rec deal is, we don't know if it's going to be the school's responsibility or our responsibility according to the notes I read.
That's kind of a separate issue.
Yeah, that's not this.
It is, but.
No, no, it's completely separate, like.
Parks and Rec, if it becomes a city responsibility.
We still have to have a plan.
Yeah, we have to have a plan.
To apply for these grants.
Absolutely, but I don't believe it's, I think it's against our policy to put a vote on this tonight. We need to have more study and maybe we will postpone it to start the plan in 22 or 23, I mean. It, it just seems like a rush job to me.
It kind of is, and I agree with you, but I'll tell you that if we don't move forward with this tonight, I will likely push this into the winter to be prepared for the spring of 22 for a grant application of April 23, which is fine, but it's another summer that the, that the city won't have some kind of water feature that they'd like to play in.
Or.
Or, but also, when we did that strategy, when we did that strategy, nobody approved a splash pad. Nobody. Zero, zero.
And again, that would be fine. This isn't necessarily for a splash pad.
It's splash pad, splash pad in every sentence almost.
Because that was what people were saying, and that's the bid that he asked for, for a recreation plan, which is also, by the way, the most expensive thing.
Right.
Which we could downscale, but we can't get the grant if we don't have the plan.
Right, and I, I just don't think we should rush into this. We should give it a little time to macerate and have some discussions with other folks. And maintenance, we can just hardly apparently take care of what we have, let alone throw another object into the.
I, I feel like.
That's a staffing issue more than.
Yeah, and I feel like, I feel like.
Is that going to change?
I feel like we're not understanding, though, the point of the plan isn't to go get a splash pad. The point of the plan is to come up with a recreational plan for how we would want to have grant money come in to make a recreational feature.
Right.
Or, and maybe it's a splash pad, maybe it's not.
Right.
We can't, we can't even start on the process of figuring out what that is with the engineers if we don't apply for it.
Right, and that's why we're discussing it now. Our first discussion.
It is our first discussion.
Just to clarify a little bit, though, we're talking about two distinct things, even though they're kind of related to each other. There's a five-year rec plan. And that's what we need to apply for the grant.
Right.
There's also the discussion of a project. Project could be a splash pad. The project could be a playground. The project could be a whatever.
Right.
Project has to be in the five-year rec plan to apply for the grant.
Right.
So we're kind of asking them to do both of these things at the same time before April 1st of 22. And I agree with all the things you're saying. It's short notice. This is the first time you're really discussing it on the record. We've discussed it before, but this is the first time on the record. I did only get two votes. We should theoretically get three votes. So there are some problems with it, and I agree. And honestly, I'm totally okay going to 23. I've got plenty on my plate. But I recognize that this city is yearning for recreational outdoor activities. And I'd like to give that to them. Now, if we don't do this, this will give me a lot more time and effort to go to the pickleballs and work on the patronicity type of stuff. This will give me more time to approach the CBD T and say, you know what, let's do the natural playground. Let's do the natural playground, the CBT in the city.
Right.
It will also give me more time to, uh, perhaps allocate some of the marijuana money that we're gonna have coming in and start working on Riddle Park. Um, now this is something that would go into the, the five-year plan, but, um, Riddle Park is kind of a grouping of just individual things, right? I'd like to make it a more cohesive play structure. Um, and what we plan on doing is pulling pieces out and replacing them one by one. As funding allows, right? So I'm not saying, hey, we gotta do this, but you know, we, we, we gotta plan a year ahead.
I just hate leaving grant money on the table.
Well, we've got twenty-three. It's not like we have to get it in twenty-two right now.
It's just one more year we don't get it. We've been not getting it. It's two more years we don't get it. Yeah, Lisa.
We're still gonna have to have a recreation plan. We're still gonna have to get a, an, an idea of what we want.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't really wait on that, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, the problem though is I don't know if it's appropriate or if we can do the five-year rec plan now and then do a project at a later date and smoosh it in there.
Well, yeah, then that's what I'm saying. Um, we still need, but I can understand what, what Rose was saying.
I do too.
About the, if we don't, if that doesn't continue and we end up doing the rec on our own, I can understand what she's saying because wouldn't that part of that have to be in this or no?
So, yeah, let, let's, I hate using the word clarify, but let's clarify a little bit more. The NKCE, the former Parks and Rec Department, uh, is really not related to what we're talking about at all.
Not now, but if, if they.
At all.
Okay, so it won't be related.
Okay, well, let's dis, uh, disengage the word recreation then. Uh, really what we're talking about is parks.
City parks.
City parks and the recreation that occurs in the city parks. We're not talking about girls badminton. We're not talking about pole vaulting. We're not talking about archery classes.
Or soccer.
More fun.
Or any of the stuff that NKCE.
Organized.
Which we love, but it is a separate issue.
And not covered by this grant or this rec one.
Correct. But again, you know, th- there's a lot of issues going on here and I see there's a lot of division.
If we wanted to have a soccer tournament, this plan would not support that.
No.
It's for like hard scape stuff.
For the most part, yeah.
When is our recreation plan due?
So this is one of those funny issues where they say you gotta have it. Um, but there's real no, no real punishment for not having one. Um, matter of fact, you know, the city's, before I came on board, the city's master plan was out of date for several years before it was updated. Um, so there is no punishment for not updating your rec plan other than you can't apply for certain grants.
Well, this is where I'm back to, we're leaving money on the table.
Well, we, we also haven't applied for any grants under the rec plan because.
Because we don't.
Well, the old one was so poorly done.
Right.
If I may, this is exactly what I was talking about, what we've been talking about. And I think city manager hit upon it also. We can't ask for something later after we get the plan created. So let's get some different proposals to give them to work into the plan. And that's, that's the only thing I was trying to say. Am I totally against a, a splash pad? No. I have questions about it, feasibility. What other things are there? Let's give them the stuff to work with and put it into a plan. So if one doesn't work out, we have something to fall back on.
But don't they meet with us to help have those options? Isn't that part of the process of getting the plan?
If they would meet with the board members, the staff members and the public.
Basically, this is just saying, we need to get an engineer so that we can start first.
Right, and give us some options and tell us what they would cost and then they can put them, and it doesn't have to be a splash pad. It can be something different, but if we don't have a plan, we can't apply for a grant.
Mr. Gross's point though, uh, what we did with the strategic planning session, we could easily do for this with the public.
Right. Absolutely.
We could get the stickers out and put the boards up and if you guys want to. Uh, although, you know, it's gonna be eight hundred on the splash pad and.
Are there, are there a lot of other, cause I know we've had this with the water treatment plant. Are there a lot of other, um, engineering companies that do this?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Cause I know like we've had where, you know, there's two people that make this particular motor.
No, they, they, um, they just happen to be groups I happen to be working with and I was trying to rush to get us to a point where we could approve this so we can get ready for, uh, cause I've known it, it was gonna be a rush job in the middle, which is just unfortunate.
Are you gonna write the grant then yourself?
Yeah, I'm not qualified to write the grant.
Okay, that's part of this.
That's part of what the engineering plan is as well. These people would do it.
Yeah, so.
And that was, uh, nineteen thousand dollars.
Or ninety-three hundred. There's two options. Now, I guess we could ask, um, if we wanted to go another month, we could ask to try to get a third.
We could, but I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't think it's feasible if we wait another month.
Okay, so then if we don't do it this month, we're, we're out another year.
I'm thinking probably yes. And, and I do apologize. I don't, I didn't mean to put you guys in this position. Just, this was on the agenda at the last meeting and we didn't get to it.
And I've been asking about it. Um, I've had a lot of conversations with members of the community building development team about grants. Um, this has come up. We've had conversations about a natural playground. We've had conversations about bathrooms. We've had conversations about a DNR grant, about a patronicity grant, about.
The issue might very well be that we're just a year ahead of ourselves. You know, we, now he's the council, but the planning commission as well. We have put so much time and effort into developing a tax base and increasing our budget the last five years. Um, that I know we're, we, we wanna get these amenities. We wanna be a bigger town. We wanna be a place where people wanna live. But we might just be a year ahead of ourselves. We don't have the marijuana money. We don't have the rec plan, you know.
It's where I'm looking at it though, from a grant perspective, cause this is a pretty big grant.
My, my feeling is it's not just a case worrying, we want people to live. We want them to shop here, bring them to town. I have no problem with providing things here to draw the outside in. Hopefully when they're here using the things we're providing, they're doing some purchasing. So let's support the businesses also, but I just think we need options.
I, I, I'm not committed to a splash pad. That's not my, what I'm looking for is to try to get grant money.
Well, and just being able to, if we decide that we wanna go forward with one of these engineers, engineering companies, we need to, this is the first step.
Right.
And then they will be able to give us ideas. They, that's what their job is. They can give us, you know, we know what we've been throwing around, but.
Right.
They'll be able to let us know and that's part of this whole.
They might have some other ideas that are not anything we've even thought of because this is what they do.
And that's what I want. Let's not pigeonhole ourselves.
Yeah.
Right, but if we don't hire them, they can't do that with us.
Problem that was, was the, the proposals were based on splash pad or something somewhere.
Because you have to have something to bring to them.
You're right. But we don't know what that something is yet.
I, I think, yeah, there's a disconnect between the two of you. I use the word splash pad just to get them into the door, just to get them right. And then what we could do theoretically is hire them, bring them in, say, here's where we want the thing. Um, cause we want people to come in and shop in our, our businesses. Uh, will a splash pad work here?
Or should it be something else?
Or should it be something else? And if a splash pad's gonna cost one fifty and the natural playground's gonna cost thirty-five, uh, maybe thirty-five's the way to go. Cause thirty-five is almost certainly going to get approved where one fifty might not. So there's a billion options, but I'm unfortunately not qualified to do this work.
And that's where they come in and we say, we have this space and we have this grant.
I'm not against.
Like a thing.
I'm not against hiring an engineer.
Cause that's what's on the table.
That's all of it.
That's not, but the way it was come in, the whole thing was leaning in that direction. If this proposal is to get somebody to determine what we want, then I'm more than content with that.
Well, I, I think either one of these groups would be open to us saying, you know what? We originally said splash pad, but now after we've discussed the costs of it, we'd rather do something else. Can you help us design that other thing instead?
Or can you even help us reach out to the community to figure out what that thing should be in this space?
So that would.
Like, what are you wanting for recreation?
That would be part of the five-year, uh, plan update.
That they would do.
That they would, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until next month. I don't think we're gonna get hung out to dry if we actually have time to study it, figure out what's going on, like Mike said several times. Apparently we need more time.
There's a second?
Again, I'm not opposed to voting on an engineer, as long as I know we're not putting their time and energy into something we may not want.
The, their job is to give us options.
And that's become more clear here.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I don't have a problem with voting for.
Yeah.
An engineer.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? The motion dies. Is there another motion? Is there a motion to pass one of these, um, recreation plan project bids?
That comes down to the discussion again, the quality and, and so forth of the work. And that I'm gonna depend on the city manager for. He's the one that's researching them and we have not.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Manager?
Uh, I think Fleece and Vanderbrink, based on the materials that they've submitted and the substantially cheaper price. Um, I've worked with them. I, I know they've done a number of high-quality projects. Um, I think at the very least, uh, I would ask that council approve of not to exceed uh, and allow us to reach out to them and discuss some of these issues. That if I go to them and say, hey, uh, instead of a splash pad, are you open to designing something else for this price? They say, sure, we'd love to sit down with Jerry Gross and, uh, he can tell us exactly what we're gonna do. And at least that way we don't have to wait another thirty days.
Okay.
So would that mean that we're, we're gonna pay them ninety-three hundred dollars to discuss that with us?
No, I don't pay them nothing until I'm satisfied that they're gonna do what I asked them to.
Ninety-three hundred dollars is for the plan.
Right.
We don't pay them ninety-three hundred dollars to have a conversation about it.
This is a big decision for us to make in one discussion.
I'm not advocating it's not. I'm trying to clarify, we don't write checks for people for ninety-three hundred dollars to have a conversation with them.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the proposal by the number two people down there, Van, and Brink.
Fleece and Vanderbrink?
Thank you. Yep, for a price not to exceed ninety-three hundred dollars.
So far. To create?
To create this recreation plan. For the, yeah.
For a grant.
For a grant project. Thank you.
Okay, and then is that being seconded?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
I still think we're going too far with this, but, um, if we're just gonna go for a, uh, design the, um, recreation plan, I can support that for nine thousand three hundred dollars.
That's, that's exactly what we're doing.
But I sure would like them to come in and speak to us about it.
I'm assuming that will be part of the.
Um, I don't know if sitting down in the council meeting and discussing the project was part of the bid. I'm sure it's in their actual bid package if you guys read it. Uh, it will list the things that they're doing as part of the ninety.
It said consultation.
So normally a consultation would be during the workday with staff. Um, obviously I'll invite everybody, but this is part of it. I, I need to at least be able to approach them and say, hey, council wants to hear from you. Will you come to a meeting? If they say no, then I'll say, okay, well, we're gonna wait till next year. We're gonna get different.
Out anything.
Right. Again, ninety-three hundred dollars is for an actual plan. It's not.
And Ms. Uh, Councilor Powell, all you're doing right now is authorizing me to move ahead. I'm not handing them a check and saying, please talk with me.
Is, when is our actual recreation plan actually due?
The recreation plan has no due date.
Okay.
The grant has a due date of April first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, and you feel that we can squeeze it in by April?
I think so.
But we really haven't decided what we wanted the grant to be spent on.
So part of the time that we need between now and April is talking with people.
Right.
And you gotta set a meeting, you know, a month in ahead and then you have to have a month afterwards to take the data and, you know, research and whatever else. Um, so it's not like this couldn't, I, I could do this in three days like I used to in college, but I'd get an F. But if you want an A, you gotta do the research and talk with people and spend the time.
The overarching project would not necessarily just be the heart of Cedar Springs for the overall, um, park recreation plan.
Right.
Right, it would be for like.
For our city.
For our city, for our parks.
So one of the shortcomings of the current plan is that we're, it's about the four townships as much as anything else. What we're talking about right now is taking Morley Park and saying, what's the future of Morley Park? You wanna put a, uh, pickleball court south of the parking lot? Do you wanna fix up the running track? Do you wanna put a, a new play structure in there? Do you wanna have water access at this location for something, whatever? Um, take the heart of Cedar Springs. Do you wanna put an asphalt path here? Do you wanna have parking there or you?
You want bathrooms? Do you want playground equipment? Do you want? And then add in Riddle Park and so that's the construct of the plan. And we have to have the plan to apply for a grant.
So we will have a completed plan within how many months?
We should. So, uh, obviously when I talked with these guys, I said, I should have it to you by July. Um, which is why it was on your agenda at the strategic planning session. Um, but I think they, if I get to them soon, we should be able to get this done. But obviously I'm gonna talk to them this.
And part of it will depend on what we tell them we want.
Yeah. I mean, splash pads are fairly easy to design. There's not a lot to it. They're expensive, but they're fairly easy to design.
Where a playground might be a little bit more complicated.
I think we. And we'll.
Okay, any other discussion?
There was a motion in a second.
There is, that's what I'm saying. Any other discussion? Cause then I'm gonna call the vote. All right, Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Could I have the motion read to me, please, before I vote?
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
You're fine. You should, you should do exactly, you should make sure.
I just stuttered over it, so that's why I was like, oh, boy.
All right, motion to approve proposal by Fleece and Vander, Vanderbrink for a price not to exceed ninety-three hundred dollars to create a recreation plan for a grant project.
I'll approve.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Conley votes yes. Motion carries. I really appreciate everyone's deep thought and conversation on this.
It's a good discussion. I just don't want to do that for everything.
No, but I mean, this was sort of a big deal. I also know that having heard from quite a few people that they wish we were going for more grants. Um, that was one of the things that we heard at the strategic plan. And this is one of those, we have not, how long has it been since we've even put in for a recreation grant? Fifteen years, twenty years?
At least twenty.
It's all new to all of us.
So does, uh, this company will write the grants for us?
Yep, so part of it is that they will put together the five-year plan. If the specific plan for the project we've engaged them for.
Okay.
Um, and then they will help me, uh, apply for it through the Michigan DNR.
Okay.
And maybe it's a splash pad, maybe it's not. It doesn't, but I hate to leave grant money on the table for recreation equipment.
We have gotten a lot of DNR grants through the CBDT. They really have.
Right, and that was part of what, when Kurt was talking to me and I thought, why are we not trying to move forward on this? So that was my, yeah. And maybe it is a splash pad. I don't know. Maybe it's not. Maybe it's playground equipment. Maybe it's something else. Maybe it's, I don't know, a rocket to the moon that I didn't know about, but.
I'm not flying on a hundred fifty thousand dollar rockets.
No, no. Okay, moving on. Uh, there is a C, but I don't see a C. Do we have a C?
Nope, just.
Okay.
Artifact.
So discussion items. Discuss. Discussion on pickleball courts. So we had quite a few people talk to us at the strategic planning meeting about a desire for pickleball courts. They just talked about putting them at Hilltop. They've talked, we've talked about the possibility of putting them at Morley Park. Um, and there was a possibility to get a patronicity grant to. And I've talked to the manager a little bit about what a patronicity grant, I'd never heard of a patronicity grant. Until our conversation the other day, but it's a really interesting. Construct. So with that, Mr. Manager, you wanna?
So this has been spearheaded by Sue Wolf, her and her husband, enthusiasts. Another one of those things, I keep, take some time off from work and drive around and see the other pickleball courts. Apparently, there's one in Greenville that's pretty popular. I thought she said there's one in Sparta, but whatever. Next time I'm there, I'll look. So there is the Hilltop Tennis Courts, which are obviously in school property. We have bids that could make that very nice into, I believe, six courts for approximately forty-seven thousand two hundred dollars to start. That's to get them to the base level and then, you know, they've got a couple of phases where you add more and more and more. There's a number of problems with that. It's on school property, so we don't get to control it. The school district has talked about removing the Hilltop at some point, which would obviously destroy this. It's next to a residential home, so you'd have people out there at all hours of the day, you know, making noise next to a home.
It's school property. It's all the restrictions of people on school property.
Can't hardly do it during the day, cause there's kids running around and the parking lot's not big enough and it's not AD compliant. So there's all sorts of issues. But if Sue Wolf were here, and I'll channel my inner Sue Wolf. She would tell you that six courts is highly preferable to four or two courts, because six courts enables you to have tournaments. Apparently, she believes, and I don't doubt her, that tournaments would bring lots of people to town. So, um, the proposals.
Where would you park those people for a tournament if it wasn't?
So, since it's on school property, there's a small parking lot. Uh, on the backside of the Hilltop, it's got ten parking spaces. And then Hilltop itself has another twenty or thirty. Um, and then it's a bit of a walk from there down to, was it Red Hawk Elementary? But, you know, pickleball people, they're, they're special people and they would definitely. And of course, Morley Park is another great option. If you guys have been down to the southern end of that parking lot. Uh, there are some old, it looks like shuffleboard courts from the nineteen-tens or something. So that is where I would put city pickleball courts, but of course, there are problems there too. That's a wet area. You'd have to have some drainage. Uh, to properly have six courts there, you'd have to have them in a long fashion instead of a wide fashion. Uh, so you might wanna start at the back and build forward, uh, which, okay, you can put a, a walking path and that's not a big deal, but. Also, uh, when Skinner Field is used, that parking is full. Too bad Counselor Nixon isn't here, cause she could testify. So there, there could be conflicts between those two different sports. And, and you know, Morley Park is a pretty busy park as it is. So we don't, we certainly don't need this to have the park be busy.
Are there other locations?
Not really.
I wondered about North Park. Too, too wet?
Very wet.
Now, it is very wet. And if mirror here, you don't wanna put anything in North Park.
Right, but isn't a pickleball court just basically a, like, a pad with a net that you hook up and take with you?
It's a little bit more than that.
Okay, I've never played pickleball.
Pretty much anything that is destructible is not something we want to put.
Right, but is there, is there that much?
I could attest to that.
Is there that much?
No parking.
So now, well, th- there's little parking and that's another issue, uh, which I'll get to in a second. But they, they have to have fencing. Not so much because of the tennis reason, which is those balls bounce forever. It's because you're using wiffle balls and any amount of wind will just knock that ball over the place. So they have, they have basically wind screens on all sides.
Got it. And that's what would get trashed.
Well, you can destroy concrete, you can destroy, you know. Everything. Um, so, also, I kinda like having North Park as a meadow. It's actually very pretty up there now. Um, but the parking issue, of course, this just is recent, so you guys haven't heard about it. Um, I think I'm gonna be able to get the look insurance. Built out as a different business. The biggest problem we're gonna have there is lack of parking on the person. Now, in the B two district, we basically said, you know what, on-street parking, municipal parking lots have added. Uh, that's not in the B two district. It's in the B three district. Uh, the only available parking near there is in North Park. So there's a possibility that I'll propose that we rent parking spaces in North Park to this business. So that is a future consideration. So, uh, the only other location I could think of for pickleball courts would be on the west side of the White Pine Trail, north of Maple.
Would there be any space? Out at West Street?
Theoretically. Of course, we're trying to sell all those properties.
But if, if you, we kept a liver next to the water treatment.
Yes, not by the water treatment plant, but the problem with that is sometimes you don't want people seeing how you make the sausages. And there's a reason why we have DPW storage and the waste fire treatment plant and all that out there. It's an industrial section of town. You don't generally mix recreation with industrial.
My personal opinion would be you wanna keep closer to town, cause that's where you want the people to come and visit.
Sure. I was just thinking of parking.
We're trying to invite people into town to see what we have.
So, I'm gonna ask each of you, what are your thoughts? Cause this is a discussion. And we're trying to move forward. So I guess the two questions that we really have on the table is. Oh, I should probably say, Mr. Manager, talk to us about a patronicity grant.
So patronicity grants are essentially crowdfunding, but at a municipal level. So there's a state-level organization called the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And they offer to match, I think, up to fifty thousand dollars of a patronicity grant. Now, of course, you have to have it pre-approved. But what you would do is put together a project. Here's what we're gonna do. Here's where it's gonna be located. Here's how much it's gonna cost. Then you ask people to donate money to it. Of course, this is a put your money where your mouth is. People say they wanna pickleball court, or people say they wanna splash pad. So you say, you know what, if that's what you want, here's an opportunity. Put five bucks, put ten bucks, put five hundred bucks, whatever. And of course, you can kinda make it fun. If you donate five hundred bucks, we'll put your name on a plaque. If you donate a thousand bucks, we'll name the thing after you, whatever. Um, and so if you get to whatever your, you know, amount is that you want. Theoretically, then the MEDC then matches that amount to get the full amount. So if you have, uh, pickleball courts that are gonna cost you a hundred thousand bucks, and you raise fifty thousand bucks, they'll match that to give you the hundred thousand dollars. Now, of course. You know, sausage making here, you're never gonna get to fifty thousand dollars with five-dollar donations. It just doesn't happen. So really, you have to line up big donations on the back end. So that once the fives and tens stop coming in, now you get five, ten thousands and ten thousands. But, the problem, the only problem with that is it takes staff time. Because instead of having, you know, Sue Wolf, Sue Wolf do all the work for us, which I'm thankful for. Um, now, I have to go in and design these things and I have to contact people and, you know. Which, you know, it's part of my job. It's just, it's something I need counsel to tell me this is a priority and you want it to be done on staff time.
So, I'm gonna ask, now that we have an understanding of the options of where pickleball court might go. And with the understanding of a patronicity grant, now you could conceivably say to Sue Wolf. We've put up this patronicity grant. This is how much we would need. If this is important to members of the community.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact.
We could totally turf that off. It's like a community committee kinda thing.
We've already discussed it. She already believed that she had access to twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of donations as it was.
Yes. That's the way it was explained to me as well.
So one of the questions I have, and I don't know the answer, is whether the city or city organizations could also donate. To this type of thing, because I believed, and of course, I don't know the answer. Uh, that the city council was good for about twenty or twenty-five thousand bucks if we got a pickleball court out of it. Uh, so if we could donate twenty to twenty-five thousand bucks, that makes us a hell of a lot easier, but I don't know the answer. But Meyer, the breweries, you know, whoever, Red Flannel, anybody wants to donate, donate.
And plus all the five, we actually did this with the red, you all might remember with the library. We had a, we had a donor that agreed to match. And we had a thermometer and we, I don't know if y'all remember. So, and we raised, wanna say it was seventy-five thousand? So that there was then a matching amount from unspecified anonymous donor.
Of course, we could also just pay for this out of unbalance. That is an option. Uh, we could also say, you know what, marijuana money, pot for playgrounds, we'll put it on a three-year plan and we'll pay for it that way. But, you know, it's, it's all a question of kinda where we wanna put it. If we wanna put down Hilltop, that makes things pretty easy, but there's a lot of downsides.
So these patronicity grants, this exists, but really what you need is something that your patrons want. To get the matching dollars. That's the, so we're back to the, we're trying to capture grant money.
So it might also be a good thing to, well, you know, I have to table anything here, but it might also be a, hey, council members, go and talk to your constituents.
Right, and this is a discussion. We're, we're not voting on anything. But this is a, if we don't have this discussion, we can't really move it forward. So, with that, I'm gonna ask each of you, what are your thoughts about trying to get a patronicity grant? And about having pickleball courts? So, Counselor Gross.
I'm for what the public would like. It appears to be that pickleball seems to be the thing at this point in time. We discussed this before as possibly being a fad. And yes, it could be. So whatever we put in. I'm gonna look long-term and what's a bid for after it's done. Does it then become the basketball court that the city manager's been proposing for quite some time? If for some reason all of a sudden we find out it's not being used at all. Then it could be transferred into something else. I would hate to think it just becomes more of a parking lot and eventually, because it's cement-based or whatever, so. As far as patronicity grants, not for any grant we can get. Uh, you know, this is part of the city council. I'm not sure we could donate taxpayers' monies.
I'll donate to the patronicity.
Well, then that's what I'm saying. I, we could probably make a contribution. But I'm not sure if we could make it as a donation, but that's, you know more than I do, so. I think there'd be an outlast if they figured we were taxing people and then donating it to something else, so, but, uh. I don't have a problem with the pickleball courts. I don't. The decision as to whether we go for the fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, or forty-seven thousand to the two hundred. I'm a cheap person.
Well, how do you feel about putting it on Hilltop though? Cause then we don't own it.
Well, I, I have the same questions everybody else has. What is the longevity? And that's what I'm saying. So, uh, we could put the six courses or six, I don't know how many was it over in, yeah, six, over in Morley Park. And find out if they just quit using it. We could put the additional in up here. And it's still gonna be there and it could turn back into a town sport. I don't know. And a lot of it does depend on what's the school gonna say. How is it gonna work? Is the school figuring that because it's on school property that we can bring the kids up there for phys ed every day? And occupy it all day long? I don't know. I don't think we've had any discussion with the school. Uh, wasn't one teacher was saying that she takes kids out to do pickleball? Uh, because it's good exercise, so. This is another one of those things that. It's hard to say a list of both for it when we don't know exactly where, what we're going for. I. I would lean towards the, the school. But again, I don't know. What is the future?
Yeah, Chair, can I respond just briefly? So I actually did see Sue Wolf's crew out at the Hilltop yesterday. I didn't get a chance to see what they were doing. She did indicate that they were gonna do some work up there. I don't know what that means. So they could have been already trying to put together a shoddy pickleball court right now. Just paint some lines on it, not fix the cracks, right? But, to something you said earlier, um, I would absolutely, uh, have this built and designed in such a way that it could be. Used for something else.
Exactly, and that's why, it has to be. It has to be. It's just, it's a flash in the pan. It's gonna be good for four years and all of a sudden it's.
I don't think pickleball's a fad, cause they've been doing it for at least fifteen, twenty years, but the Boy Scouts who have their cabin there. Have, uh, stated that they'd love to have some kind of ball court there to play on. So, yeah, I, I would definitely have it made in such a way that, well. If, for whatever reason, now it's a basketball court.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Other than the fact we have to put the drainage in and I, I agree, it's wet in there.
And maybe we need the drainage in there regardless, just to make it more usable.
Oh, you see, there, you gotta build it up.
Anything else? Ms. Race.
I personally don't feel that we have a solid place to put it in the city. You know, that there's, I mean, it's just not like, this is where it would be perfect. I understand we have Hilltop, but I don't. I don't know anything about this. I know that she came in and proposed and Hilltop and. We haven't heard anything from Hilltop, if this is even gonna, you know, that, that's my concern. I completely, you know, myself personally, Hilltop is not even. Anything that I'm, I mean, if we're gonna do courts, it would, it would have to be in the city and. I just don't see a good spot for it.
I've had low-level discussions with Mr. Smith. They're definitely open to the possibility. But, this is city investing city money into school property, so of course he'd be for it.
Of course. But it's his, it's.
And then he could turn around tomorrow and say.
No.
Yeah, oh, sorry, y'all can't use it. We're gonna tear down Hilltop and build it on their building here and we're gonna put a building on top of it.
Which, of course, we'd have some kind of agreements in place before that, but.
I mean, it makes sense for Hilltop to be, for it to be at Hilltop, but.
Having been on both sides of the contract with Skinner Field, from having been on the school board. And then on the city, and having dealt with Skinner Field. I, I'm very wary. It's, I mean, that's my concern. If we have any responsibility. But anyway, anything else?
Well, as all I can say is, for many, many years, I've seen those two beautiful lots across the street, empty, year after year after year after year.
Across the street from City Hall?
Yes, where the. Cronkite's Hardware was and Lippert's Pharmacy. You probably don't know what I'm talking about, but it's the two empty lots over there. Beautiful spot downtown. I don't know how much they're asking for them or if they'd even sell them, but I think it would be a. Good way to look at it, could be fenced in, could be safe, could be lit up downtown. That's my opinion.
Possibility. I, I did have a discussion with somebody earlier this week about the. Which one was that, on the northern side? Lippers Pharmacy Lots. I'm willing to explore those as options.
And DDA could throw some money at it too.
That's a really interesting idea.
Take a look at is parking then, if they're gonna have a tournament or something.
Anyplace we go, we're gonna have parking issues.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that actually is the thing that, like, so many people in the community could walk. It's so central.
We got the street parking, we got off. Yeah, street parking lots.
Brand-new, newly asphalted and painted parking lot directly behind there.
Yes, it looks very nice. Anything else?
Nope, that's my only opinion. I, I don't see any place else.
Any, any, any thoughts on the patronist be grant?
It could do everything. A to Z.
Yeah, I'm a little leery of it being with the school. I mean, that, it is, it is a nice place to, that they're looking at, because that is rundown. So it, you know, would be, the benefit would be that, that would be
Revived.
Revived and, you know, brought back to life, so that they play there. But I think if we did do it there, we would have to definitely have a, a major agreement with the schools so that they don't just wanna take it over and take it away from the community. So, otherwise, I can't think of any other places either. If, if it was downtown, that'd be nice. It would be, but I don't really know that much about it, so.
So I, if I could. I, I, I really do like that idea. Only issue you're gonna have is now you're gonna have a monolithic fence, basically outlining that lot. And in New York City, I'm, I'm just envisioning, you know, the downtown basketball courts with the big, you know, fifteen-foot fences all around. I don't mind it, but I think that would be out of place in a small farming community.
It can be designed in, you know, attractive ways, but it's a place.
But you're right, lighting it up at night and people playing there at night and walking to the bars and there's a lot of possibility there.
Did you do the kind of fencing where it completely closes it in and you put like murals on it?
You could, but I think that kinda
Like artwork?
reduces the, seeing the people playing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it doesn't look as industrial. I mean, I didn't, or what if you put it on like part of it, like one side?
Well, so, you guys are probably not familiar with the, the kind of black fabric that has been placed on some of the fences in town. I would bet you that there is a way to screen print something on fabric, you know.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
I'm sure a big old red flannel underwear or something. I'm sure there are ways. You let me know if somebody comes through there with an AR fifteen.
I've been trained.
If we dock and go onto the table, then you'll know.
My former Secret Service.
Um, so, yeah, there's definitely that as a possibility.
Is it any of it for sale? Have they approached you at all about?
No. Now, my understanding is that the lot, the Lipin Pharmacy Lot.
Lippert.
Lippert's Pharmacy Lot has been maintained by a person who likes keeping it around for the Christmas tree for the chamber. Chamber no longer uses that lot. They've transferred over to the Harvester Springs. Somebody who shall not be named continues to mow that lot for free for that person.
Someone who might be the main.
Yeah, might not be present with us today. So I've maybe hinted that if that were to stop, maybe she'd be more willing to sell the property. But I honestly don't know. The Cronkites have floated all sorts of ideas and nothing has occurred on their. And while we're discussing it, the location where the drain went through and the white building got knocked over, I anticipate the county will probably offer the lot to the city.
Oh.
And I think that might make a good location for a food truck, a permanent food truck installation.
Yes, it's not really big enough for a pickleball court, right?
That's a story for another day.
Right.
So I guess I might be able to measure that Lippert Pharmacy Lot and see if that's a possibility.
Possibility, it would just be great to have that down there.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Good idea.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Atkinson? Nope. I will just close with, um, to, to finish this discussion and then unless anybody else has anything else. I, I'm really not in favor of putting it on school property. Every contract that I have seen like that always has an out clause where either party can basically bail for any or no reason. At which point, the school could literally decide tomorrow, they're gonna tear down Hilltop and put a building there and there's absolutely nothing. Put it over the top. And we could try to write a contract that says they can't do that, but it's, it's.
That's a contract that wouldn't be approved.
Yeah, it's just really, really hard. And so, I, I would be, oh, I love the idea of the patronicity grant, especially if pickleball is something that people really feel like they want. Here's your opportunity to kick in money. I was trying to figure out Morley Park, I was trying to figure out Wriggle Park, Worth Park. I had not even considered the idea of trying to purchase a lot. That is a really engaging idea. Um.
And we've discussed in DDA about purchasing some property.
That would be, okay, is this helpful? Is this, it, any other things you'd like to add to the discussion? Mr. Manager, do you feel like you got sufficient input on discussing this?
Um, I never feel like I have sufficient input, but.
Do you have another question you need answered or more specification or more detail?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, then with that, we will move on to a discussion of chickens. This has actually been before us before. It was voted down, um, four to three. If y'all remember, I think you were on council then.
Oh, so it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a little while. Yeah, the.
I was on the planning commission.
Yeah, we were both on council. It was Dan Clark and myself, and were you part of that conversation? Sure. So, chickens within the city limits. I will start down here this time, Ms. Powell.
I'm between a rock and a hard spot in this. I, I, I understand chickens are fun pets. I had chickens when I was a kid. And, um, I think of people, the, the outline that Mr. Womack drew up is pretty darn good and logical. But one thing I do know about chickens is they're filthy, they stink. And we would have to be on people all the time about making sure that those chickens are kept clean. So are we gonna have, who's gonna be responsible for all that?
Do you, do you feel like we would need a, like an additional ordinance on that, or do our regular ordinances, like, I mean, I have two dogs that I have to clean up their poo?
What he wrote up was very good in that we have to, people have to keep them clean and, you know, keep the mice and all that stuff out of it. If people will abide by that, it'd be a, a great thing. They're great little pets. I always enjoyed mine. But I just don't know if they're the kind of thing you want your neighbor to have, although it's forty foot from a residential, which is good. It cuts out a lot of any close chicken coops and ten foot from a lot line, so.
There's a limit on the number.
Yeah, a limit on the number, so there's the possibility it could work out. I just think it'll have to be carefully watched.
Is there anything you would wanna see changed based on what he presented to us?
I really thought it was pretty good, actually. It doesn't mean there aren't things that we aren't foreseeing.
Sure, but I mean, of the scope, you're not like, well, it should be forty-five feet or.
No, I thought forty was pretty good. Of course, you know, if you're in a real.
The number of chickens was five?
Six.
Six.
It's, there's work involved in chickens, but so is with dogs and cats, whatever.
Dogs are.
But I thought the ordinance was well-written. No, I'm done.
Okay, Ms. Atkinson. Do you want me to come back to you?
No, it's okay. Um, so they're supposed to be kept in an enclosed building at all times. They're not gonna be running around the yard? Are they gonna be in fencing?
So not an enclosed building, cause that word implies to me a garage or a house.
Well, coops.
Oop, yes.
Well, that's, it does say except inside a completely enclosed building.
Well, then somebody screwed up.
Oh, that's being butchered. It can't be butchered unless they're in a.
Okay, somebody half-screwed up.
Yeah, so I don't know, I, because they can fly, right?
Not really.
Not if they're in a pen.
And in general, they just don't fly very well. I mean, in my experience, I don't know, the chickens I had as a kid were not particularly amazing. Like, they can get up, I don't know, to a tree limb, kinda.
I think if you want chickens, you should live in a rural area. Just don't see chickens in the city, but that's just me.
Well, that's, it's your, you're one of the votes that has to decide. And it was a four to three on the last one.
Yeah. That's, that's really all I have to say. Otherwise, unless, but it was well-written.
Yeah, I think it's just like any dog or cat or guinea pig. The mom ends up having to clean it up anyway, so you know it's gonna be clean. For the most part, yeah. Um, I don't have any problem with it, so.
Mr. Gross?
No, I would second Lisa. It should be rural. Part of the situation, when we discussed this before, if you're gonna allow chickens, you're gonna allow ducks. Other fall.
I don't think we are.
No, I'm just saying, somebody's gonna come in and want it. Well, they ain't got chickens, why can't I have ducks? Ducks are much larger, I'll admit. And chickens can be very annoying. I'm not sure about cute.
Mine were.
I, I would prefer we didn't.
So, so far, I think we're split. I was pro-chicken on the last one. Um, I don't particularly wanna have chickens, but I don't care if other people do. I, I have friends who have them. They, some of the newer breeds of chickens that are pets, these silkies that you, that have like no feathers on their necks and giant feathers on their heads and, I, you know, I, but I mean, I don't know that it's that different than having a parrot or having a dog or having, I mean, um, if we, I, I would be willing to say maybe you can't have six. Maybe it's four. If that's the concern, I mean, cause at this point, we're down to like, I really think a lot of people think of them as pets. That's my take on it from what I've seen. They're not the pet I particularly wanna have, but I'm not gonna tell other people if they can.
I think that, um, a lot of people are growing their own things nowadays.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, I see that people are gonna use them for eggs and if that's what they wanna do, they wanna do. And I think if that's the case, they're gonna need to have or the six, I think, you know. I don't have chickens, but.
Yeah, I don't have.
You know, there's typically more than two.
They, they lay an egg a day. They, they lay an egg a day when it's sunny.
When it's sunny?
You're impacted by daylight.
If I could interject, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm fairly libertarian in my views. I, I agree if you want chickens, you can have chickens. Um, but from the city's point of view, the more things you allow, the more of a code enforcement issue it becomes.
Yeah.
And we're not writing laws for the good people, we're writing laws for the bad people. Cause, um, I, I've actually known people who had chickens for years in a city and never got caught. Not this city, years in a city and never got caught. And it wasn't until, and it's a funny story, cause this is from my attorney days. Um, it wasn't until the neighbor got caught with, I don't know, an illegal cat or something. And the code enforcement came down and instead of saying, yep, sorry about that, they said, well, those people have two dogs and that person has chickens and, right? So that's how they got caught. And we actually went to the city council and they passed a law allowing chickens um, under certain circumstances. So I think some of the things that I put in there, such as you have to have a minimum double lot.
Right.
Uh, makes it significantly better versus saying, you know what, anybody can have chickens. But now you're severely limited the number of people who can have chickens. So, you, I, I think if you're going to allow it, you have to determine what the minimum lot size would be.
I agree, it's very well-written.
Ladies, might as well polish an apple and put it on.
Well, we know, all know that some people, what horrible care they give their pets. Let alone what's gonna happen to their chickens. You know, it's, it, it can be heart-wrenching even just seeing chickens not being taken care of, but.
Had that. We've had people who had goats in the city. They were not well-taken care of. We had, thankfully, Council Nixon's here, there are people that, uh, bunny rabbits. They kept in an outdoor enclosure with no wind protection, um, thirty below zero.
Dogs.
Put their dogs out. I mean, you know, my dogs wear sweaters and.
And if you do.
Sleep on my couch, but.
If you do, this, this board passed a significantly stronger anti-cruelty ordinance last year, so if you do, let me know.
Yeah. I guess, again, I'm, I'm looking at that from the perspective of, it's like any other pet. And the same things would apply. As far as.
That you can slaughter and eat.
Well, I understand, but that's true for rabbits too. But you don't get to, um, leave it out freezing. You don't get to, I mean, all the animal cruelty things that we applied to dogs and cats and rabbits, apply, would apply to chickens.
So would we then want to, if we were to pass this ordinance, uh, add a modification to our animal cruelty ordinance, saying it applies to chickens as well?
Probably. Does it apply to rabbits? I'm trying to remember. We had a huge discussion about rabbits. Is that part of it? Cause I know people raised, and we had a whole thing about how you can and where you can and when you can slaughter them. And the four-H person isn't here, but.
I'm pretty sure the ordinance basically said any out for pet. Anyways, the, the point is, I'm, I'm only looking for direction of whether this is feasible.
At the moment, it seems like we're three to two.
I still think it's agricultural. I, I loved my chickens when I had them, but I just can't see them in town. It's just the way it is. They stink.
So currently, we would be three against, two for? Am I getting that correct? I don't know.
Well, and I hate to be the.
So straw poll.
It can't support the ordinance.
Okay, you're a no.
Yes.
You're a no. I'm a yes.
But this, this wasn't up for a vote.
I just set a straw poll.
You have to wait for the other two.
I'll, I'll be the bad guy and say we are missing two crucial votes.
Right, cause, but if you're looking for, what I would say is, at that point, with two and three, we probably need to hear from the other two people.
We have to hear.
So I'll kinda put this on the, uh, side burner and work on it a little bit more, but I'm not gonna put a lot of effort into it.
I wouldn't, yeah. Not until you, and, and count, I would be very interested in what Council Nixon has just seen, being that she's the four-H person. Has rep, you know, rabbits and shows them, which is not here because she's at the four-H right now, so.
I'm measuring people's, uh, council members' lots to see how big they are right now.
I am not going to be getting chickens, and I think I'm.
How big is mine?
Mine will just float in the pool.
Your chicken will float in the pool. It's gonna swim. It's a swimming chicken. My, my dogs.
I'm not getting it.
I will tell you that I measured Councilor Nixon's yard. Her yard is about two thousand square feet too small.
I don't know that she wants chickens, but.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that's gonna be the most important aspect of it. How big of a yard are you gonna require?
It has come up several times from community members. Every time it's been brought to us by a community member that wants them. It's not, it's not a council member.
And we have to realize it's, you know, though, there's not like a herd of people coming in saying, we all want chickens. You know, but anyway, we can move on.
Okay, anything else on chickens? So Strategic Planning Matrix from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one special meeting. Mr. Manager.
So I didn't have much to add to this. I'm just pulling it up now.
I appreciated how much we seem to be kind of in agreement on what our important things should be.
Well, one thing I would point out though, and this is something that Council Powell brought up earlier, just because something didn't score highly or didn't get any votes or whatever, doesn't mean that I don't want to or shouldn't pursue. If it is. I'll, I'll give, I'll give you an example. So I have a. I'll, I'll give, I'll give you an example. So I have a philosophy in my life that if something takes two minutes or less to do, you do it now.
Sure.
Um, because you'll just, it'll be done and you'll feel good about it.
Stephen Covey and, and David Allen would agree with you.
I have no idea who those people are, but sure.
First things first.
Now, they may not be the most important things, but if they take less than two minutes to do, I'm gonna do them. Um, same thing with this. If I can get a splash pad for free, I'm gonna say, yes, please, thank you. Whereas, you know, hiring a DPW director is significantly more complicated and costly and we have a DW director, um, that's more of a planning for the future type thing.
Right.
So, I, I, I think it was valuable. I think they did a good job. Um, I'm appreciative of the efforts that they put into it, and I think you guys did a great job. One of the things that they told me after the end of the meeting, and you guys were putting stickers on things, was, uh, Al Vanderweer comes up to me and says, Mike, I just wanna let you know that your council's doing something that I never see any council do. I said, what's that? He says they're conversing while they're putting the stickers up. I'm like, okay. He says, most of the time, council members just are in their own little bubble. And they've already made their decision up and they put up their whatever. Your council is already, he didn't use word politicking. They're, they're already discussing how to move forward with their votes. And he thought that was, uh, very impressive. So they also commented about how well you guys get along. He says, not every board's like that. So, this is valuable information. Um, it's not the Bible. Um, and we will use it especially in CIP and future discussions.
Sure.
But this was also a fluid thing. You know, next, uh, next month, after all the marijuana stuff is done, maybe I'll be able to catch up with some of my stuff and might not need an assistance.
And again, the, if somebody comes to us with money, if the patrons want a thing and we have a patronicity grant, then that's what we implement money for. If the community building development team comes and says, we would like to build a community building, the correct responses, why, thank you, that would be amazing. We would love to have that. Um, that's, you know, as we moved forward on the fire station, that was the same kind of when the community building development team offered to take down the old building, help move forward with plans, we say, thank you, we appreciate that.
Now, the only other thing I would add to this is, uh, you saw it was a fairly easy thing to do. We've done miniature versions of this in the past. Um, I don't know if you guys recall, probably the first year I was here um, with the, what do they call it? It's done in March over the school.
Community night.
You're welcome.
Where we, uh, we put out a bunch of ideas, here's what the city's working on, give us your stickers as a similar idea, and so we might want to, um, do this or something similar to this with the public. Whether it be part of the, um, rec plan or whatever else. Uh, part of the master planning session, which we'll probably be doing next year. Anyway, so that's all I have, all I'll say of this.
Okay, anything else on the, um, strategic planning matrix? And I have pictures of all of those. I think, oh yeah, did you, I think you sent them?
I think I emailed them to everybody.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, for whatever reason, you don't have them in your email, you know, because I, I do have pictures of them, I took on my phone.
I think it's all pretty obvious to us all that the important things to us, we won't have anything if we don't take care of our infrastructure.
Yes.
And that really, really showed in this, and I'm very proud of everybody for focusing in on.
Yeah.
We don't have that sewer water, electricity and roads. We don't have anything. School's nothing, it's gone.
I agree. And it's, it often is the stuff that we tend, I shouldn't say we, many communities don't handle and don't take care of because some of it you can't see. It's not, you know, fancy, it's not wow, but
Not, if you don't see it, it doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist, right. A lot of people, the water, we talked about water infrastructure, as long as it comes out of the faucet and flushes when it goes, you know, when, yeah, nobody cares. Um, but we know that the moment that it doesn't come out of the faucet and it doesn't flush away, um, it's a problem. And so, we put a lot of work and money and effort into upgrading our water infrastructure that needed to happen and
Got more to come.
Yes, we do. And roads went with a piece of that and I've, and our council, you're right, our council is very wise in understanding that. So absolutely, anything else on that?
I think we all see that, what's needed, not only for here, but for the citizens too. I mean, we have we have very few, we need more workers to get more done as well, and we know that they work very hard here to keep things running, so we wanna make sure that we don't burn anyone out either, so that's important too.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I use as a segue for two seconds? So you will probably note that, uh, Darla and Bill are not here. I decided to give them the day off because of how hard they've been working. Marty, I don't know why he showed up.
I don't love sauce.
Marty had a very, how many calls did you have that day?
Well, Tuesday, we had, with the storm.
So the staff works their butts off.
Yeah, they do. No question.
And I, I think some of you guys might know that the city hall was eighty-two degrees yesterday. Because we didn't have our HVAC system, and we still had staff here working.
As a teacher, I have all the fields for that.
Just everyone seems so dedicated, and we see it every day with how, how the city is changing, and it's just so nice to see that. But we wanna be able to try to help you the best way we can too. We, we truly believe you guys work very hard and we know. So we're thinking about you and we hope that
The elections were, went very well, and I was, you know, I'm always very proud when we have our elections and they go so smoothly, and you hear these stories from other places about struggles with, you know, um, I had a friend in Detroit who, a couple of years ago, they didn't even have the polling place open. Because the person didn't show up to open it. Like, so people are there to, to vote at seven and you can't because it's not open. Um, that never happens here. And that's, you know, I, that's, that's our clerk. So, and along with our election workers, our poll workers, so who, and our clerk makes that happen. So that's a big deal. I, and obviously, Bill's gonna be really busy and our DPW people. I, for once, do not have a tree on my house and have power.
They were all knocked out.
I think that's the issue. I don't, we don't have anything left. I shouldn't say that.
I heard that tree crack and I thought, oh, there goes Pam's tree again.
Yeah, no, no.
I think we can move to, well, we can just skip D and go to E.
So, but are we, are we good on strategic planning? We felt like that worked.
We're good.
Um, I do think the manager is saying that maybe we should try to do that once a year.
Uh, more often than I think once in five.
Yeah, definitely.
So, I mean, I would love to see us do that, like, every summer.
If nothing else to review what we've done.
Right.
See where we've
Yeah, absolutely.
And especially if we have additional monies coming in with things like Pat for Parks. Um, and if we have this patronicity grant, is, is there a limited number of times that you can go for that?
I don't think so, but they do have to be approved of, um, and it's a little nebulous of what kind of criteria they have. I've even approached them in the past and see, you know, asked if they had a criteria list and couldn't provide me with ones.
Because to me, that seems like a really exciting way to say to our citizens, so there's this thing you want. There's a process.
Buy some pot.
Well, but for the patronicity, so you set it up and you get people to donate money and these folks will match it. And if it's important to you, like, here's a way to make this happen. That isn't taking money out of the general fund that involves us trying to fix our water infrastructure, fix our roads or fix our sidewalks. And so, to me, that's a, like, you want pickleball courts? Let's do pickleball courts. Here's, here's a vehicle. And then whatever the next thing is that might be important, then it's that citizen buy-in piece of it's, you know, the, the fun recreational piece that a citizen wants. Here's our opportunity and vehicle to get that and to get that money. So, to me, that's the, I was really excited to learn that, and again, we'd need to do this every year, every two years as those things pop up, cause I, if, you know, Sue wasn't telling me, I don't play pickleball, so I would know nothing. So, that was helpful to me. So I agree on that. Anything else on that?
No.
All right, moving on. Motion to place a personal review of the city manager into the September regular meeting agenda.
I apologize, I now see that it's a motion in discussion items.
Yeah, so basically, do you want it as a motion or?
I actually don't need a motion.
I was gonna say, the, the form is in our packet.
This was originally asked to be placed here, um, I, I, I remember why not. It was originally as a consent item.
Okay.
Um, but one of the council members wanted to discuss it, uh, probably to get a head count to see if it was appropriate to do at the next meeting.
I'm fine with it.
I'm with.
I'm not sure why it wouldn't be all right.
Right.
Is everybody gonna be on vacation and it's gonna be me and Rose hanging out doing the discussion?
I just wanted the public to know. I just wanted the public to know that we had to postpone it, so this year we can get after it before we get into another
Yeah.
plague or something.
Yeah, another plague, right?
Who knows?
This one that continues.
Oh, yes.
Um, all right, so then we will suggest to the city manager that he put that on the agenda for the next meeting. And there is a form in this packet. If you need an additional form or you can't print the form, you can get it up here at city hall, yes? Okay.
Although remember, anything you write down can be void.
Right. Absolutely. So, then moving on, discussion on ordinance section sixteen dash forty-six permitted open fires. I was sort of, I, I read through this, I was sort of confused. I'm not sure, are we looking to change it or we?
Yep, so I, I, I will admit that I was just a little hasty. Um, I should have discussed this with the fire chief before I put it in front of you, cause there are a number of things I think we'd like to change about it. But this was simply to highlight one of the ongoing issues that the co-enforcement has. Um, there are a number of second-story apartments, particularly in the downtown, cause that's where we allow second-story apartments. Uh, and the second-story apartments will have, uh, grilling devices of some kind on their landing on the second story. Uh, we prohibit the use of, uh, grilling devices on the second-story landing of an apartment complex for a number of safety reasons.
Sure.
However, co-enforcement has never actually caught anybody using those grills because they tend to be used for dinner.
Sure.
She's gone by three or four o'clock. So, we know they're being used, we know it's a safety hazard, and we don't have any laws that would allow us to actually do anything. So what we're proposing right now, and of course, I'd like to modify it a little bit more before we actually pass a law, uh, is that we add the language possess, maintain or store such devices. So we say to these people, hey, we know what you're doing. Um, and you simply can't even possess, maintain or restore that grilling device on your second story or uh, if you want to, you can keep it in a shed somewhere, but you can't keep it there. So, that's what I would propose we change that law to.
Do you have any thoughts on this, Chief?
I'm talking about the city manager the other day. How well can fires, fires in your backyard and stuff, doesn't pertains to this particular ordinance or at all?
Sure.
Um, however, there are some rules in permissible fires, um, you can't burn garbage, you can't burn trash and that kind of stuff. This, I'm in agreement with, uh, there is a lot of it and big concern is the second stories. However, I have in my travels shoot down, um, seen some nice decks on some nice houses that it's pushed right up against the house on the deck. Hopefully, and I believe the ordinance says eight feet. But there are some decks that you can't get, uh, grill eight feet from the house to still have it on the deck as well. This, this is maybe not one hundred percent, but this is a step in the right direction, yes.
We could also modify the ordinance to say you can possess or use, uh, anywhere within eight feet of a house.
Well, that's, that's what I mentioned. It, it, uh, it does state that in the ordinance, it, uh, it has to be twenty-five feet from any, any building, uh, that doesn't belong to you. Your building and eight feet from the house. It, it's, uh, it goes quite in depth once you get into it, but, uh, yes, I agree with this. It's, it's another tool for the both of us.
I think the primary policy concern though is that, uh, you don't generally own the apartment. Yeah, if you burn down your apartment, you're burning down a lot more, it's a lot more dangerous.
We've seen that.
Whereas if
See how that works.
Yeah.
Whereas if you are stupid enough to, uh, have a grill on your deck on your single-family residential house, you are the most likely to suffer from that. But, I'm all for safety, so I'd be willing to make those modifications as well.
Is that something that could be added to or should be added to each rental agreement?
So the city has no rental agreement.
No, but I'm talking about in putting some pressure on the renters.
Yeah.
We don't.
Yeah, I don't know how we'd get involved in a private agreement between the
Okay, I just, I didn't know if it was something that
And we, frankly, that's kinda silly for us to even try to do, and we could just say, here's your five hundred dollar ticket if you wanna continue doing that. This is the sledgehammer way of solving it, and I'm fine with it, cause it's a safety issue.
I believe most apartment complexes tell them they can't do it.
Most.
Well, I might interject real quick. A prime example of what Mister Walmart was saying, um, you have a grill on your deck on the second floor, and not only have you eliminated your living quarters, you've eliminated everybody else in that building. The prime example was a couple of years ago.
Right.
I found out, part, there were eight families displaced, displaced.
And that was like a cigarette?
Due to cigarette.
Yeah.
Oh, and again, with Mister Walmart. I got a little nervous when they were talking about splash pad and appropriate heater up there.
Running through the fire? What's the problem with that?
Fire walking.
Right.
Another thing we could do is we could have the fire department add this to the many proactive things that they do. Um, and put together a half sheet of paper that says, you know, if you have a grill and you're in an apartment, now we can not have it on the second floor, but if you have it on the first floor, it has to be how many feet away? Eight feet away? And make sure that they have this information, because I think there's a lot of people out there who don't even real- realize it's a danger.
I, I had a neighbor ten, fifteen years ago that had their grill right against their house and like melted.
You're talking primarily rentals, right?
We could do homes as well. I, I'm totally fine with that because the back of my house is melted from the guts is from behind, before me.
Mine's melted too.
So I'd be totally fine with it.
I have a Smith's ba- patio behind mine and the grill can't sit within eight foot of the house.
Right.
I'm just saying, that's
Yes.
Can I say there's a melted area on mine? Yes. Cause the lid was lifted up, leaned back against the vinyl siding, don't work well, so.
Right.
Yep.
But again, it should be something being watched all the time anyway, so.
We're not writing rules for the smart people.
Disagree. But sometimes those are the ones that are impacted most, so.
Maybe, that might be
So let me then
Talk to the chief.
Yeah, let me, uh, write some more modifications into this and thank you for potential change.
Have you had to respond for fires for that? Does that happen?
It has, yes. Um, agreement with Mister Walmart's girl. I think there's a a lack of knowledge. Somebody can change, maybe we can put it on the city website.
I'd even go so far as to say we should maybe do a mailing.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Safety first.
Before you light that grill, check the yard.
Well, check your distance because you don't want your house to catch on fire. I mean, yes, we should put it in the context of an ordinance, but
I'm sure there's some that wouldn't mind if they're out.
Only if some scrapping young men show up to put it out.
The, uh, also having a roof over a grill is a bad idea, which I know
So the ordinance says
Across the street, I've seen that.
The ordinance says eight foot from any building or overhang.
Overhang, yeah, that's pretty important, but I've seen, I've seen it several times.
Yeah, oh, I know.
No, I know people who store them under, I mean, like all winter, I store mine.
So that's when it becomes an issue is they'll claim they're storing it there and then they move it eight feet away when they use it. We're not there to police it, you know they're not moving it when they're.
Yeah, yeah, we move ours seasonally. Anything else on that? Alright, then moving on to. Um, the industrial, this is also part of that.
Marijuana.
Marijuana.
You guys second started dealing with marijuana?
Dear heavens.
So uh, this is coming to the fore because we've addressed the twenty sixteen state law, we've addressed twenty eighteen state law. Uh, we have not addressed the two thousand eight state law. And the reason it's coming now is because there was a case from twenty eighteen. That's kind of finally worked its way through the courts, uh, finally got resolved in twenty twenty. And uh, so now we do have the legal authority to do what I'm asking you guys to do.
Okay.
So.
Waiting and pressing it.
Yes, uh, and we also discovered there was a location in town that was doing one of these types of growths.
Right.
So uh, the question is whether we want to have an ordinance on the books to allow us to regulate it. We don't have to. Uh, we certainly could just allow them to do whatever they want. Um, but I think at the very minimum, we need to tell these folks if they're gonna do it under this law. Uh, that you gotta do it in such ways where we can't smell it. Um, and and other basic.
And just to clarify, this impacts people who are registered caregivers.
Registered caregivers who are growing marijuana plants for their registered patients.
Right, this is not the person who has a plant in their basement where they're only used.
Correct, so. Because uh, marijuana such, um. I was gonna say organically grown laws, um, they really didn't play well with each other after they're written and you know. So.
There were ballot initiatives put out by citizens.
Citizens, um, so the twenty eighteen law allows people to grow, I think, twelve marijuana plants recreationally. But any more than that, you know, now you got fines and whatever. This law allows you to grow up to seventy-two plants.
That's like a lot.
Which is a lot. So really, ultimately what it's gonna come down to, and the most important thing for councils to decide. Is what, where we want to allow this type of thing to happen. So the, the Michigan State Law, Michigan Supreme Court case says we can, we can limit what they do. We can tell them how they can do it, but we cannot tell them they can't do it. So uh, the location that's currently growing, the one that we know is in I one industrial zone. Kind of an accessory use to be primary use of the property. Most cities that have allowed this have specifically written the law to only allow it in a residential zone. On the idea that if you are growing it and growing it inside your house. Uh, you've gotta be really dedicated to what you're doing. Um, I personally don't see any problem with allowing it in the industrial section of town. Under kind of the same rules and guidelines that we're talking about here. But I think you should only allow one operation at each property. Um, if you guys are aware, there is a mini storage location on White Creek Avenue, North of sixteen. On the west side of the road, so it's in Soul and Township. And I'm sure their code enforcement officer would be happy to know that there are multiple marijuana growing operations located in that mini storage. Uh, location. We don't want that. We don't want somebody saying, you know what, I'm gonna start running out my uh, my warehouse. For thirty-seven of these seventy-two plant rows. So it it's kind of, I think it's kind of a no nonsense ordinance. We just have some very minor issues that you guys need to decide, such as what zoning districts do we want to allow this?
And it is a thing. I've been approached by some people I don't even know. To grow marijuana in a pool barn at my family farm. Which I have no intention of, I mean, it's not heated, it's. I have a tractor and some picnic tables in it.
Yes, I shouldn't say she didn't do it.
So I, I did not. My electric bill is under ten bucks a month, so for that particular piece of property, so no, I don't think so. But it's very interesting to me that you, it's, it's important enough, lucrative enough that you would cold call someone. That you don't know.
Well, so.
Asking to use a barn that you don't even know what they do or don't use it for.
So here's, here's kind of the, the dark side of this. So back in two thousand eight when they passed this law. You know, it it was done under the presupposition that we had cancer patients here there. Well, twelve, twelve plants per person is a lot of.
Lot of marijuana.
And so they definitely were not using twelve plants for it, but you can still grow twelve plants. So maybe some of that marijuana, a little bit out the back door, and that's what's happening. Um, of course, I'm not gonna dedicate deputies to go out there and investigate it.
Count plants.
Buy marijuana at the store. Um, but we don't want a lot of this going on, not only because it's just a bad thing, but we don't want them competing. With the legalized marijuana that's being grown.
So, I guess. You said. Talking about having this just per property.
One, one grow operation.
One grow per property. Is that property of that person's name because?
No, I'm talking about physical location.
Okay.
Her lot.
Her lot is what I'm saying. I mean, cause Joe Bob could own four. Properties and for in that square block. You can put four and you know, or is it Joe Bob only can have one? You know what I mean?
But Joe Bob would have to buy all four of those properties.
Right.
And he couldn't divide his property without, like, it requires a, um.
There's a lot of laws about when.
Yeah, about, about splitting pieces of property, like that's not, you can't just decide tomorrow, my, my forty acres. Tomorrow, I can't decide it's four sets of ten just because.
Right, it's just, okay.
It's, it's my forty acres and unless I specifically go to have it divided.
It's forty.
It's forty.
You could regulate that you have to have a registered caregiver at that location.
And that is what's required under state law.
Yes.
Okay.
And so if they're doing it without having somebody there. Then you are, they are in violation of the state law.
Sure.
But what I'm saying is we wouldn't allow more than one caregiver.
Right, right, right. Well, even with the caregiver, correct me if I'm wrong, he could have twelve plants per. Uh, person that he's working with.
Correct.
That would be sixty plants. If he used it. Another twelve plants for them. If it was a couple.
Correct.
That was there and they were both users, then there could be additional twelve plants for the other person. So it can be a big operation in a home.
Home or we're talking about potentially an industrial.
Right, right, right.
Now, under the, the Supreme Court ruling, it basically said you just can't prohibit it. Now, like I said, most cities were, and I presume this was before the Supreme Court ruling, saying, okay, you can do it in your home. And the idea that seventy-two plants, I don't know if seventy-two plants would fit in this room.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say marijuana plants are large.
So I think the idea was, yeah, go ahead, seventy-two plants and you can't really do that at home. Um, whereas we could take the alternative view and say, you know what? Seventy-two plants, it's kind of a commercial venture. We'll let you go into the industrial section of town and try to convince one of those people to let you rent space. Or, you know, whatever, but not grow in your home.
Right.
Now, can we completely eliminate saying you can grow a plant in your home if you want?
So under recreational marijuana, no.
That's what I thought.
So under recreational marijuana, we have no authority. They can grow up to twelve plants legally.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say. I thought that was like a, if, if you wanna grow a plant in your basement, you get to grow a plant in your basement.
And. Because we would be honest, if we were to prohibit caregiving in your home, we'd be out of step with the majority of cities and we would get sued because of that.
I right, I agree. And, and I just don't think it's the right thing to do.
Right.
I mean, really. But we can say no more than twelve.
Uh, we can say no more than seventy-two.
In a caregiver, for a caregiver.
Under this ordinance that is being proposed.
What does Laura say about the seventy-two? Can, can a caregiver say, oh, I got seventy-two plants on this lot and seventy-two plants on that lot?
So the whole point is that they have to be registered with the state.
Right.
You got one person who's the caregiver.
Right.
You have five patients. And if the caregiver is also a patient. That's six times twelve.
Seventy-two plants.
Seventy-two plants, right, but they have to be registered.
Right.
And so you can't like, oh, well, I'm also registered over here. Now, it's one registration in one place.
Okay.
But you could be a couple. And both be caregivers.
Yes, but you'd have to have five separate patients.
Right.
But that's what I'm saying is if you got a couple who's doing this, we don't want a hundred and forty-four plants in one location.
Right. So we could just say you can't put caregiving plants business in residential.
We could, but like I said.
Be out of step.
I think you're being, be out of step with the majority of municipalities and I think you might get sued for it.
We'd say it's an enclosed area.
Well, so it does have to be an enclosed locked location.
That's, that is one of your preventers.
And air filtration.
Which is probably why my pool barn looks appealing to someone driving down the road.
Although, and this is totally unrelated, uh, we found a marijuana, outdoor marijuana grow operation. In the city, surrounded by a four-foot tall fence, and that's it.
Okay.
The deputy said we'll talk with that person.
I, I bet they did.
And they had, as though you couldn't tell what it was, we go with, they had a giant marijuana leaf on their front door.
They believe in it.
Things we do anyways.
Okay, do you have enough of what you need from us? Do you need more direction?
Uh, is everybody okay with allowing it in the industrial zone?
Yes.
Am I hearing any other opinion?
On a straw poll. Mr. Gross.
The only, one more question. Our industrial zone. On West Street. Because we have received the federal funds for the extension. That was one of the things we talked about. So they couldn't allow the grows out there.
Right.
So are we looking at the industrial here in town?
I would add language to the ordinance that says unless otherwise prohibited by law.
Okay, okay, so. Over here, uh, off from Fifth Street. An industrial area.
Yep.
So somebody in that area could begin to grow.
Yep.
Yep.
So, and that's what, so then you're more in tune with all the residential areas anyway, so. So it doesn't eliminate it and put it outside of town more. It could put it right somewhat in the middle of town, so.
Of course, I feel just a little silly talking about this for as long as we have because caregiver operations are really a dying breed.
You're right, it's gonna go away.
It's gonna go away, just like medical marijuana, because people didn't really need it from medical.
Right.
Yeah, it's come on, um, so.
Yeah, and the people who do are still are buying it. I mean, I, I have a family member that uses it medicinally and I brought her to our business over here. Because, and she was looking for a specific cream that she could mix with lidocaine, but, um. Yeah, it's, you don't, you don't need the medical card anymore.
So one, one question I have, let's say the, the old Keeler Brass building, you know what I'm talking about, Wolfrey? So somebody goes in and has part of that as a medical marijuana grow area. In part of that building, can another part of that building be used for another?
So that was gonna be the, the last thing they ask you is. The, the, the location where we found the grow operation already existed. Is in two separate buildings. You got a major, a, a main building and another building, which is not an accessory building, but it's a different building. Uh, do we want to allow that? Because we're talking about a co-primary use of a property. Or do we want to allow this to be an accessory use of a, of a property? We could say, you know what, this would only go into an abandoned industrial building. So you can't have two primary uses. You can't have it as an accessory use. It has to be the only primary use of the property. We could do that. Now, I'd have to have these people stop growing where they're already growing, because they'd be violation.
I don't know if that's.
On the other hand, you could say, you know what, if you have extra space, you wanna make a little extra money? Go ahead, have it as an accessory use in your industrial building.
And Laura would have to approve that setup, right?
I don't think so.
Really?
They just would have to approve your license and then you'd have to meet the requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only, as far as I know, um, cause this is not the majority of what I spend my time on. Uh, is that Laura approves of a caregiver. And then the patients, and then beyond that, they don't really get involved at all.
And then there is a set of guidelines of like, it has to be enclosed and it has to be, you know, you can't go stick it in your front yard.
Right.
But they're not stopping by your house to see how you're growing it.
Right. Yeah, that's a little dicey.
That's why it gives us the opportunity here now after the Supreme Court ruling. So you know what, I'm not gonna require this six months process like we're doing with the, the businesses. But you do have to submit a registration. And part of that registration is telling us how are you gonna take care of the odor?
And the security.
If we wanna make that part of it.
I would think so.
I don't, can you?
At least light, lights around the building or something.
The, the more requirements you put on, the more likely we are gonna get pushed back.
Yeah, cause again, we're back to the, if they're using it as a caregiver. And we have restrictions on where you can put lights.
I, I guess.
Your residential area, right?
My preference would be also to allow them to hide themselves as best they can.
Yeah.
I'd rather not have the, come rob me, cause I've got security lights.
Right, I was gonna say, like, I live across the street from one of those industrial buildings and I couldn't really care less if they grow marijuana in there. But if you now tell me they're gonna have floodlights on it twenty-four hours a day, I'm not gonna be entertained.
Or cameras, you're.
I don't care if they put up cameras. I think they might have cameras now. I think they get to watch my dog pee, but. We take her on a walk, but I, that's a different, cameras are a different story. But lights is a whole other kettle of fish. I mean, I don't need lights shining into my kid's bedroom when he's trying to sleep.
I know what you mean.
I don't have a problem with going in that's good.
Alright, so I guess I'll bring a, um, I mean, this is pretty good ordinance already, but.
Yeah.
More finalized ordinance.
We've spent so much time talking about marijuana. Alright, anything else then? Moving on to discussion, October first, October second, Cedar Springs Brewing Company's community event application.
Now seeing that it's nine oh six, I probably should have just approved of this on my own authority, because I could have. But, um. Considering it's uh, at the same time as the Royal Final Festival, I thought it was at least appropriate to show it to the council before I approve it.
Is there any like specific thing we should be looking at with it?
Only difficulty is that now with the, um, the festival is putting their beer tent in the Hardestier Spring. You're gonna have basically two dueling bands and two dueling, you know, locations. Um, and the possibility of having drunken people stumbling between the events. Um, and if there were no other considerations, I would say let's shut the road down. So that people can at least drunkenly stumble safely.
It is a thought, but there's no parking, there wouldn't be any.
There's a lot of parking that you would destroy if we did that. So it's a possibility, maybe. Between Second Street, um, and the old fire station's driveway, we could shut it down. Um, at least that way, you know, people would have a safe place to go. But the road would essentially be closed. You'd have a lot of angry people.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the.
So other than that, no, they've done this event many years in the past without incident.
Have they done it on Red Flannel Weekend?
Yes.
Okay, it's just a matter of the beer tents in a different place.
They were close before. They were only a block apart before and.
When it was at where the old, where the fire station is now?
Yeah, yeah, and it wasn't a big.
Yeah, I don't remember that being a problem. I mean, I didn't really go to the beer.
I think if you can see the other tent, you could hear the other.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was wondering about. It'll all work out.
I think it'll be okay. Anybody else have thought? Anybody else have thoughts?
Probably discuss it with Sergeant Probst and see if there's any way we could, uh, make it a little bit safer.
Do you want us to vote on it? Because you have it as a discussion.
No, just brought it to you for.
Good enough. Anything else then? Moving on to communications, before I move on to communications, anything else on that? All right, communications, community event calendar. Mr. Manager.
Something the clerk's been putting together all year and, uh, I know Ms. Powell's been thankful for that. Um, it's a good thing to keep people.
It was one of the things we saw when we went to Rockford. Do you remember? We talked to them about how did they manage their, when we were having a struggle with red flannel?
Yeah.
And they put up a community event calendar.
It's really, really nice.
Yeah, I really appreciate the work you put into that. Ms. Johnson, it's fabulous, welcome. Any other thoughts on that?
Nope.
Twenty twenty-one Zoom meeting credentials.
The clerk put together the credentials for every meeting for the rest of the year. Of course, the board currently is not allowed to, um, attend virtually unless they have a health reason. Uh, but if we do, those are the credentials we'll use.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I think it's really helpful for like, say, staff. We can have staff zoom in.
Yep, and also members of the public.
And, and then obviously members of the public.
Yeah, the planning commission has had, uh, more people attend via Zoom, I think, than in person.
Yeah, so I think that's, and we've had people, last month, we had red flannel, we had, we don't have anybody this month, but. Mr. LaRose is available via Zoom, so.
If he's not sleeping.
Well, that means he gets to take some downtime during all of our deep discussions about.
No, he, he was, he was teasing me earlier, saying that he had to attend, but he might sleep through the whole thing.
I'm okay with that.
Um, yeah, okay.
Okay, so anything we need to know about that? I've had a lot of people say they appreciate the option. To be able to Zoom. And I think it's, I think it's useful for staff also. Uh, annual MERS report.
There are a lot of things I'd like to say, but I probably shouldn't while it's being recorded.
Okay. Is that it?
Every year, the city does everything right and we still lose ground.
I understand. And we even put a big lump in.
And the economy is good. Economy's good right now. We're still losing ground.
Expectation of the amount to be contributed is not realistic, even to stay ahead of it. Like, if, no other organization has to do that. That even ones that have guaranteed pensions, like the amount is just, it's, so we do what we do, right?
Yeah.
And we make sure that we pair people when they retire.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're pretty well funded. I think we're seventy-eight or seventy-nine percent.
Yeah, we put that big lump in when we had that.
We put fifty thousand bucks in two years ago and we went up, I think, one point. We did everything right this year and we didn't, went down one point.
It's, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a game that the legislature is playing. It's not about actually making sure it's fiscally sound.
Like I said, there's a lot that could be said, but nothing reported.
So, believe me, as a teacher, I have all the feels. All right, then, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, approved community event, Green Family and Friends Pumpkin Giveaway. That's been really fun. Anything we have to add?
Uh, it will occur in the Hardestier Springs this year.
Oh, that's nice.
A couple of things I wasn't like super keen on, so I did change some things from what was proposed, but otherwise, you know, he does a great job. He was, uh, with us at the. Oh, what event recently? The, um.
Neon.
Yeah, the neon glow in the dark night after one of our concerts.
Sure.
Yeah, he's, he's a good person, does a lot of good stuff for the community.
Yeah. Uh, are we doing Spooktacular?
Uh, the plan is, yeah.
Okay, it's just not on here yet.
Oh, I might not be here.
Okay.
I'll definitely be on your agenda for next month.
Well, let me know, because I will. I, we do Halloween.
We need, we need at least one person handing out candy.
Marty.
He's at the fire station. They're giving away. I was gonna say, you're always at the fire station giving away donuts and cider.
We have in the vast, I'm not sure.
The fire department.
Partner for the driver squad. Two of the guys have tipped in and buy some extra stuff. We still have a little bit left on our gift cards from our open house, Myers, and we'll walk by some candy for them. It's not gonna be. Probably as big as it has in the past, but. Unless council members showing up on it.
I can, I will give you a twenty.
Each.
Done.
Well, the, Halloween's on a Sunday this year, so there's potential for being big.
Yeah.
It is in our neighborhood.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we love Halloween.
It's crazy.
So. Um, all right, then moving on to September sixth, twenty twenty-one, approved community event, Wolverine Skyhawks Model Aviation Club Annual Air Show.
I'm actually shocked at how many people come out to those events.
Yeah, there's a lot. It's very popular.
They had a, an event that conflicted, I think, with one of my concerts recently. Um, and of course, I went down to visit with them and say hi and all that. They had more people at their event than we had at the concert.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, so I, I did give them the notification that, you know, they can't be there forever because we're developing that property. Um, but I'm happy that they're still there as long as they can be.
Maybe that's again, a thing that could happen at North Park.
Maybe.
Because that doesn't require a lot of infrastructure. They have like a little runway.
I think their runway would be destroyed in five minutes.
You think so?
Oh, yeah. It'd have to be portable.
Oh, yeah, they'd have to wrap it up and take it with them every time.
It's a marsh.
And then if they miss the runway, they're going into the drink.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a true effect.
All right.
I think they have some regulations, the whole coast thing. Fly into residential area too.
Yeah, I think they do.
So you have to be careful with it.
Because, yeah, they are very popular. Department reports, city manager.
I think the only thing I'd report is I had a hell of a good time doing that cake walk. Really did. Uh, Counselor Race was there with me and she helped me hand out all the treats. Busy Moms Bakery, they gave me a good discount. Um, Counselor Conley helped donate some of the money for that.
Um. Sorry, I couldn't be there.
Melissa from the library, she had a great time getting all the kids to try to walk in one direction, which I thought was an easy thing, but apparently not. Um, and, uh, we accidentally had an explicit lyric in the, I think it was Spotify Kid Bops channel. So I don't know how that happened.
The music scratches.
All the kids got two or three cookies.
Oh, yeah, they got a ton.
Rice Krispy Treats and it was just a great time. And I'd love to redo it again. Um, the, the inception of that, of course, was cake walks I did as a kid. Um, but I've been trying to convince like the women's club or somebody to do it as a event on Red Flannel Day.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, we did it for free for the kids, you know, because kids like free treats. Um, but if you get community members to donate a small cake. And then you charge fifty cents or a dollar to do the walk.
Right.
It's a great fundraising opportunity. I don't know why somebody hasn't done it.
Hmm.
Anyways.
Maybe the garden club.
I'll, I'll leave it at that.
It's only six of us.
Well, yeah, you only need six to run the event. You just need thirty or forty people to donate cakes.
Yeah.
So anyways, kids had a great time. Concerts have been doing really well. Um, unfortunately, we had to, uh, reschedule the one from Wednesday. Yesterday.
Yeah.
Uh, because there was a storm.
A little bit.
They'll play on the twenty-fifth. Uh, we have one coming up, uh, next Wednesday and then reschedule one. I did wanna see about maybe getting a movie in the park.
Hmm.
Um, to bookend at the end, uh, because of course now it's getting dark around eight o'clock. Unfortunately, um, apparently it costs quite a bit of money to get the license to play a movie. Um, and I'm not quite a hundred percent sure how to do something like that either.
Chamber used to do it.
So, yeah, it's something I just haven't really put a lot of time to research into. Anyway, something maybe for next year.
Great idea.
Other than that, um, I've got a. Leadership Institute here in Pennsylvania in September. Um, not sure if I may have money left over to go to the Grand Rapids MML Conference. Maybe, I'll see if I can steal money from somewhere else in my budget. And then my wife and I have a vacation planned in October.
Assuming you can fly.
Assuming that we can fly. Well, and we're going to, uh, current COVID hotspots, so hopefully I die as a member.
That's a bad place to pack.
I, I will.
I just say.
Right, right?
Have you met my wife?
Probably don't. She's like, I wanna go.
Happy life.
Happy.
Happy life, so you go where the wife wants.
I, the poor.
Define combinations.
The poor planning commission chair is trying to figure out how to get me to Miami, so I have all the feels.
Not in a, not in an airplane, I'm guessing.
Well. I, it, Christmas break is the plan. The, you know, ninety-year-old family.
Well, no one flies them.
You know, but, but it's, Miami is twenty, we've driven it, twenty-six hours. South Miami.
Anyway, so that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Department of Public Works, Mr. LaRose, do we need to nudge him?
No. No, if I'm here, uh.
So how are you doing with all the crazy storm cleanup? Are we okay?
Uh, we've had a couple of long days and nights. Um. Uh, we're, we're getting ahead of it. Uh, this evening, power was restored to the rest of town, I believe, so everybody should be back. Power.
You know, lots of people were thinking it was gonna be Saturday.
Yeah, I know there's still some people out on the outside of town, but at least we got the light back and all our lift stations and the wells are back online, so.
Okay, you're running those on generator?
Yeah, everything's on generator, standby motor, so. We're able to still produce water. I appreciate the comments about the infrastructure. Yes, we have a lot of aging ins- infrastructure that we still need to take care of, so. You guys are aware of that. And, uh, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you for all the crazy hard work.
Thank you.
Tell your crew, thank you.
Yeah.
Will do.
Tell you can get some rest.
They're not done, I don't think.
I know.
Uh, police department, anything from Sergeant Pope?
I didn't see him today, so I didn't get a chance to ask him, but, um, we haven't had any major serious issues that I'm aware of.
I'll take that. Fire department.
Here.
Anything you wanna tell us?
I guess I'm supposed to talk into this thing. Um, I had two. Gentlemen take the MFR medical class and I just got word tonight that they both passed.
Oh, wonderful.
They're going to International Registry to be licensed. And I understand National Registry, um, you can practice in the state of Michigan. And any other state that rec- recognizes that licensure. Um, I also got a text message this afternoon. Kent County Emergency Management had a stockpile of PPE. Um, they've sent out a survey about sixty-eight weeks ago, and we were awarded a skid of various gloves, masks, shields.
Good.
Thermometer. Temperature diggers and, um, that's supposed to be delivered next Tuesday. I'm not quite sure where I'm gonna put a skid of that stuff, but, uh. Until we get a chance to sort it and put it away, but that's all, that's all free.
We have to add an, add an extension on your new building for that.
Well, we got a room that we use for medical supplies, but I'm talking, I'm talking a fairly good-sized skid here. It's ten thousand pairs of gloves and.
Wow.
Stuff.
Right.
Um, again, like Mr. Womack, uh, I laid it on real quick. We've been extremely busy. Um, in five days, the end of July. I believe it was the end of July, the very, very first of August. Uh, five days, we had seventeen calls.
Oh, my goodness.
We turned right around this week. We've had twelve since Tuesday. Um, it, I'm not. And, and the funny thing about it, real quick, was I mentioned in one of the staff meetings that we were slow.
Oh.
I will not say that again.
So you need to bring in donuts, huh?
Yeah.
You have, uh. My report. Um, I will answer any questions, otherwise, um.
Is the new station meeting all the requirements we hoped it would?
I don't have enough room.
I can believe it.
No, it, uh, it's. Very, very, very much appreciated. I love the, the layout and everything. It, it turned out good. It was a little expensive, but it turned out good.
I just, sometimes on paper, isn't the same as when you actually have to. Put boots on the ground. So I'm glad it's working out as planned.
Well, part of the thing that we started right off on the get-go, um, was I wanted something that's gonna be around for fifty, sixty years or more. We got forty-one years out of the pole barn down there and I thought it served its purpose well.
Yes, I agree.
I know a sitting councilman that, uh. Worked pretty hard several different times to get an addition, put on to that due to the lack of. Excuse me, space.
Yeah.
Now we got the space. It's, it's kinda weird that we can open doors on both trucks and still walk between them.
Yeah.
Yeah, not just the skinny people can. Can respond to emergencies. You don't have to turn sideways.
I don't hear anything else. I guess I'm gonna hand it back to the mic back.
All right, wonderful. Moving on then to our city clerk, who just put on a wonderful election.
Thank you. Um, we did have four new election workers and that worked out very well for us, so hopefully they are all planning on coming back. They all said yes, we wanna be back, so we'll invite them back in the future. It was nice to have a couple extras if somebody is sick or is on vacation. We had two of our workers that were on family vacation, so. We're working to get some new people.
How did our numbers compare to a normal August?
Um, they were low. I think it was about eleven percent turnout between AV and in-person. Um, it was to be expected with only one item on the ballot.
I was gonna say, I was just curious how that relates to other cases where that's been true.
Yeah, and it's hard to find an apples-to-apples comparison because it depends on what's on the ballot. If there's one item on the ballot, you gotta find another election that only had one similar race in that. You know, for comparison, but, um, overall going well, we'll start preparing for November and get absentee applications out for November and start the process over and. Fingers crossed we won't get audited, but if we do, we'll be prepared.
Any changes? I've been, I've been trying to follow the legislature. Have there been any changes on voting?
Currently have not been any changes passed. There are thirty-nine legislative changes to election law for being proposed.
Reposed, right. That's, which is a little nuts. When you're trying to read them, they're not all complete and they're not all, do you, do you have any idea? Is it your understanding that they probably aren't gonna pass to be impacted before November?
Likely not. Okay, I think a lot of them will stall out.
That's my feeling as well. So, good to know. Thank you. Uh, anything else for the city clerk? Then moving on to finance director, do we have anything we need to know about that with Darla, anything?
No, um, like I said, I let her take the night off. She's been working pretty hard and there was nothing on the agenda for her specifically, so.
Code enforcement, I think most of what, I feel like what we've talked about has been. With ordinances regarding marijuana and chickens and grills and.
I, I mean, I think she does a good job. It's a very tough job that she does.
Absolutely.
But she does a good job and, you know, I work with her pretty intimately on a regular basis, so we're moving the city forward.
We talked about removing building inspection as a line item because it's not really a thing, like.
I think it's probably due time for us to, uh, maybe take another look at the bylaws and, and how we have the agenda structured. There are a few things I wouldn't mind changing.
Then Boarding Commission Minutes, anybody have any questions? I think Donna Cart told us quite a bit about the library. The, um, anything you wanna bring us up to speed on regarding the, it's no longer the county rec, it's the Kent, I don't know what to.
So formerly known as Parks and Recreation.
Right.
Um, which of course was a misnomer because they don't deal with the city's parks at all.
Right.
Um, they only really dealt with recreation. And then they changed their name, what, two years ago now, to North Kent Community Enrichment. Um, which, you know, was essentially the same thing with a couple minor changes. Uh, we significantly increased the funding from the units. Um, but, I mean, they're criminally underfunded as it is. Um, and unfortunately, Nelson Township has withdrawn. And, uh, seventy-seven thousand dollars. And uh, seventy-seven thousand dollars is a huge amount of money for them to have to swallow. So I'm not entirely sure that they're gonna be around too much longer. And there has been some minor discussion about how we would proceed in doing that. Uh, cause the school district, they're the ones who say, but they're the ones who benefit from this.
Yeah, it's primarily for, for students, it's for K-12.
And the city and the townships don't really benefit that much. Because because the school is a member. Um, and virtually everybody who lives in the townships in the city go to the school.
Right. We're all in the same school.
We're all kind of in the same school district, yeah, so I won't cry if it goes away. And that would then allow us to kind of redirect some of the money that we're using for that towards other purposes. A primary of which is, as much as I like the concerts. Um, you know, it's just another night meeting for me. Um, and I would probably take that seven thousand bucks and hire a parks attendant or something like that. Who could open up the, the concerts every week and, you know, clean up here and do that, whatever else, so. But uh, Jamie Gunnarson, she's been doing a great job in her time, uh, I think she's just been given a very hard deck to play.
Sure. Any other questions about that?
No, no.
I can tell you, um, a really long time ago, when the garden club first organized, it was the parks portion of the Parks and Rec. And our five, our five oh one C-three was organized under the Parks and Rec. That was the way we were nonprofit. And then this is when Norton ran it, Norton Johnson. And um it was the, the parks portion of Parks and Rec was the garden club. I have no idea if that's still how it's, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I just am very minimally, and I go and prune rose bushes and things. I'm not the president and I don't deal with, with the secretary, I don't deal with any of that, but when I did, that was how it worked. And um, that's been quite a while. So there used to be a, a vehicle for that piece of it. All right, then, council comments, Mister Gross.
Thank you for everything. Uh, had a lot of discussion tonight. I think it was a lot of productive discussion. Unfortunately, all of our discussion began to have a lot of direction at times, but there was a lot of good discussion over it. I would like to thank the DPW uh, for putting the straw down on the corner of Main and Oak. Uh, I was the soul that went down there and weed whacked that, it was looking pretty jungle-ish. And uh, I apologize for not getting back down to get the grass off from the sidewalk. Hopefully, the property owner there on the corner decides that maybe it should be mowed, I don't know, along Main Street if if the city mows it or if the property owner mows it, but uh, this began to look pretty nasty, so thank you for taking care of that, I'm assuming there's seed there, but uh maybe code enforcement could take a look at the pickup, spending a set there with a flat tire for quite some time. Uh, the other vehicles are set in the parking lot that don't seem to move. Uh, the vehicle parts, they're sitting outside the garage. Technically, I guess that's a complaint, but it's just, as long as I was on that corner, so.
It's already in the court system.
Good enough, thank you, and uh, thanks for everything that's been done.
Ms. Race?
A good night, we got to talk a lot about things and it's good to be able to have time to discuss these things again. There's a lot of history with all, you know, with all of us and then there's new people too and um, it's always good to hear everything, that's how we get things fixed and improved and we work really well together.
This was a thinking meeting. You had a lot of thinking.
Yeah, yep.
I agree. Ms. Powell?
Uh, just wanna thank the chamber for decorating Main Street with the new flags and the new trash cans and they, apparently they got a grant somehow and they've used their money wisely. And I do appreciate that and uh, I'm still having a ball at the concerts and uh got a few more, I'm looking forward to them and uh just having a ball in the car shows and I just it's hard for me to imagine they have all that much fun right here in Cedar Springs.
Um thanks, thank the staff again, cause that's, they really help us um, get organized so that we can have these great discussions. Um, I work in Grand Rapids and um, most people that hear that you know, I live in the city or of Cedar Springs or that come in there from Cedar Springs to talk about how much is going on in Cedar Springs and how much we are up and coming and getting more businesses and, you know, just they're enjoying the fact that we are actually not Cedar Tucky anymore. So um, we just enjoy that. And I enjoy that, that people in Grand Rapids are realizing that and that they see us not fighting and working together and making things happen.
Okay, thank you, and I would just like to say, um, and thank you to DPW, they've been working so hard and thank you to our clerk for making our elections happen and in time when elections have been much in the news and being quite the fuss and you just make it happen and I appreciate that. And thank you to our city manager for bringing things to us for these opportunities for grants. When I've said, gosh, I'd like to have more grants for this. You went out and said, here, here's this patron, here's this, okay, I had no idea. So that's huge and really, I would like to say thank you to this council. Thank you to this council for taking the time to discuss and to think and to be forward-looking at things like co-owning things with the city or with the school, with things like dealing with um, how to manage our parks and develop our parks with things like is, how would we use a pickleball court going forward if it's no longer the new great thing while simultaneously responding to what our citizens want and the, the, really putting in the work and the thought and the time and not just saying, I'm gonna just vote and be done. I really appreciate that, cause it's, it takes work to think about and read and contemplate and look in the history of it and I've been on a lot of boards and they haven't always worked that way. And I greatly appreciate the time and energy and dedication that the people on this board put into making our community the place it is, so thank you for that. And with that, we're adjourned.